Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, August 4th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kurzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
As this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your future viewing pleasure. Please join me to salute the flag.
Congratulations. I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Present.
Mayor Moore is absent this evening. Jen Souter.
Here.
Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Bob Zuckerman.
Here.
Kathy McLaughlin.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
And Chairwoman Kurzak.
Here. The resolution for 1201 memorial is moved to the next meeting. Okay. All right, we have one application tonight, 1001 First Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board and Board professionals. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney at Red Bank, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, Asbury Park First LLC. We are speaking about the property, which is located at 1001 First Avenue. Obviously, Asbury Park, it is block 401, lots 10, 11, 12, and 13. Just by way of very brief review, the property has three frontages. It's frontage along First Avenue, Second Avenue, and Langford Street. The property contains approximately 57,157 square feet. The property is located in and subject to the requirements of the 1001 First Avenue Redevelopment Plan, as was recently amended. We are respectfully seeking preliminary and final site plan approval tonight for a proposal which complies with the redevelopment plan requirements. We are not aware of any known exceptions or waivers, so we are very proud of that. Our general proposal is to construct a five-story residential apartment building with 104 apartments. The ground floor will be a parking garage, bike storage, lobby, and utility room, and floors two through five will contain the residential apartments. As you will hear, vehicular access will be by First Avenue, and pedestrian access will be from First Avenue, Second Avenue, and Langford Street. As part of the city's unique redevelopment process, we have had the benefit of meeting with city officials, and we had an informal presentation with the City Council. We had discussions with the zoning office, and we've had discussions with City Planner Beth McManus. And in conjunction with those discussions, the redevelopment plan has been amended to address some of the concerns that were expressed or issues that were expressed along the way. And some of, and we're going to hear about this, but just to give you a shortcut, some of the plan amendments that have been effectuated, which have been carried over into our plans, include, one, my clients enhanced the aesthetic of over what was originally contemplated and agreed to memorialize, I believe the actual plan amendment attaches and references exhibits that we are speaking with and keeping in line with. And the original development plan provided for a zero-foot setback, and that appeared to cause some consternation for some. And so what we are ultimately providing and what the plan as amended requires is a 24-foot, 6-inch setback off of First Avenue, which, in fairness, is better in line with the neighboring properties, a 5-foot setback off of Langford, and a 15.9 setback on Second Avenue. Again, that's in line with the neighboring properties. We're happy about that for a number of reasons. Number one, it complies with the plan amendment. But we also think, and we hope you will agree, that it preserves the view corridor and significantly enhances the public right-of-way. And also, in accordance with the redevelopment plan as amended, we have retained a landscape architect who is here tonight to testify and to design and create this and beautify this newly created green space along the public right-of-way. We also, as part of the amended redevelopment plan, basically, I think, calls for the consolidation of the two garage access points to one access point. And I think that was done to preserve parking, and we certainly recognize the legitimacy of that. And we also removed, relocated the garage access to First Avenue and further away from the lofts to address some concerns that were expressed in that regard. The redevelopment plan also calls for the lobby on the Second Avenue frontage to keep it there to create a better, excuse me, aesthetic facing the Second Avenue loft development. As initially proposed, there was some commercial use proposed on the first floor. That has been eliminated from the proposal. There was a feeling amongst some that it would just generate more traffic and parking than was necessary, so that's been eliminated. And the last two things, we agreed to enhance screening and buffer and buffering, and we think, and we agree to all this while maintaining the original parking situation, while maintaining sustainable energy, landscaping, and lighting requirements. So we are quite excited, and we will have testimony demonstrating and evidencing all those things that I just said. So I respectfully submit that we have a qualified and competent team tonight. We have Luke Radowski here. He's an engineer. He's our project manager. He's not anticipated to testify, but he is a very talented and capable and very engaging figure, and if he needs to answer any questions, he is here. And he's also spearheaded, what I'm going to say, is a significant amount of community outreach, not required, but certainly always a positive thing. And we also, in terms of our witnesses, we have Doug Cleland, our engineer. We have Dan Zanato, our architect, Brian Leaf, our landscape architect, and Gary Dean, our traffic. So, Madam Chair, in conclusion of my introduction, we are excited to be here. We are excited about the project. We are excited to hopefully obtain approval to build a compliant project in this wonderful city. And on behalf of my client and the team, I thank you for your time. And with your consent, I'd like to call the first witness.
Absolutely.
Okay. So Doug, why don't you just state your name, and you'll be sworn in?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Doug Cleland, professional engineer.
Yes, I do. Yes.
I do.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Sam Ravaki, and board engineer.
Thank you.
Can I just request that our professionals also use the microphones because they're a little high up? And just to be clear for the public that's here, just so that you understand the process, is that you will have the ability to ask questions having to do with every witness that comes up. So once the engineer finishes their testimony, and we ask all of our questions and whatnot, then you will have the ability to come up and ask questions of that witness, of whatever they have said, whatever they've testified to, you can ask questions about that. So we will ask you and say, does anyone from the public have any questions? Then that's your moment. All right, and that will happen for every witness. So if you have questions for any witness, you can do it at that point. Then at the end of, if we get to that point today, or maybe not, if we get at the end of all presentations, the public will have the ability to have a three-minute comment on the project itself, on whatever your thoughts are. So that'll be three minutes at the end of, after everything is presented, at the end of everything, you'll have three minutes to discuss, I mean, to tell us what your thoughts are, and then we will deliberate after that. So just so that you know what the process is.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, I am. It is.
I think we can.
We appreciate that.
I think we can.
Very good. So Doug, instead of, first of all, you're familiar with this application, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the plans which have been submitted?
Yes, I am.
And instead of me going through a direct series of direct questions and answers, why don't you just describe this proposal from an engineering standpoint in terms of site description, and building orientation, and surrounding uses, and all the wonderful engineering things? If you could do that, that would be wonderful.
Can we also assign a number to this because we don't have this?
This is a new document?
It's a new document?
Yes.
So could you sign a number to it?
A1.
A1.
Okey-dokey.
And this is, just to describe it, a neighborhood aerial of the project. Colorized version of the site plan, the same site plan that was submitted to you, but just to provide some neighborhood context as I go through my testimony here.
And just for record-keeping purposes, is there a date on that? And if not, we'll put today's date.
Yes, there is a date. 7/30/2025.
Thank you.
Okay, so the project's located at 1001 First Avenue here in Asbury Park. It's block 401, lots 10 through 13. It also includes an unnamed, unimproved 10-foot right-of-way, which is proposed to be vacated as part of the project. Including the vacated alley, the proposed lot area is 57,157 square feet, or just over 1.3 acres. It is in the 1001 First Avenue Redevelopment Plan. The site is currently undeveloped, mostly consisting of grass, a small area of trees in the northwest portion of the lot. And as you can see in the exhibit, it really bookends the eastern limit of block 401 and is bounded by First Avenue to the south. I'll try to highlight some of these as I go. First Avenue to the south, Langford Street to the east, and Second Avenue to the north. Existing residential use is to the west. So across Second Avenue, there are existing loft condominiums. And across Langford Street and First Avenue, there is a variety of commercial and industrial uses. And just to summarize our application here, prior to appearing before you tonight, our team did work with the city's planning and redevelopment office to revisit and amend the 2018 1001 First Avenue Redevelopment Plan, which was approved via ordinance 2025-4 by the mayor and city council at their February 26, 2025, meeting. The applicant has also had several meetings with the neighbors to discuss the project, and we're before you tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a five-story multifamily residential building with 104 apartments, including 21 affordable units and 127 off-street parking spaces located within a ground-floor parking structure. Also on the ground floor is a lobby, an indoor bicycle parking facility, refuse and utility rooms, all located along Second Avenue frontage. If I could just back up really quickly, actually, I'll get to that in a second. As far as affordable housing goes, the 20% requirement is satisfied with 21 affordable units proposed. Four are one-bedroom units, 12 are two-bedroom units, and five are three-bedroom units. And I'm going to switch to a little zoomed-in version of the same thing. So this is just a colorized version of our site plan. The date is also 7/30/2025. We want to mark this as.
That's your site plan?
Yes.
A2.
A2.
Just one moment. I just want to see what date our site plan is. Our site plan is 4/14/25.
Yes, so this is just a, we prepared it after the site plan was submitted. It's just a colorized version of what was submitted to you. So you should have 4/14/2025.
Okay, so that's the one we're going to be reviewing?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one? 4/14 or the most recent?
Well, they're the same. We just.
Okay, so what's the most recent date?
It is July 30.
Other than the color, addition of color?
Correct, it's the same exact plan. Yes. So the building, the proposed building is L-shaped to match the existing property. It's approximately 260 feet wide along Langford Street and 190 feet wide along First Avenue down here. As part of our work with the city, we did obtain the average front setbacks for the residences immediately to our west. And we did show that on the neighborhood aerial. The Second Avenue average front setback was determined to be 15, and we drew a white line representing that line. And then First Avenue average front setback, 24.6, and we drew a white line to represent that as well.
Does that satisfy a question about that?
Sure.
Does that setback to the front of the porches or the back of the porches or?
That was to the building itself, not including the porch, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we are setback 15.9 feet from, so we're 15.9 feet from Second Avenue, which is slightly greater than the required average. From Langford Street at its closest point, we're 5 feet. There's a slight jog in the property line right at the midpoint where that right-of-way is being vacated. And then we're 24.6 from the First Avenue frontage. There are five pedestrian access points from the sidewalk to the building, starting at the top of the plan. There are two on Second Avenue, one to the lobby and stair and elevator, the second to the trash room. And then there's also two on Langford Street, one leading to the bike storage area as well as the electrical room. And then down here, there is an entrance from the Langford sidewalk to a parking entry. And finally, another sidewalk from First Avenue to that same parking entry to get into the garage. As was mentioned, vehicle access was reduced to a single access point as part of the redevelopment plan amendment, which is now just a single two-way 24-foot-wide driveway off of First Avenue. And to talk a little bit about parking now, importantly, the available on-street parking on First Avenue, because that's what's being impacted, there's approximately, there's a yellow-painted curb from this corner here on First Avenue. So measuring from that yellow-painted curb to the nearest existing driveway planned left over here, there's approximately 193 linear feet of curb, which can hold and park eight vehicles. By adding one curb cut, it's anticipated that we will lose one on-street parking space. The parking is not striped, so this was approximated using 22-foot-long parallel parking spaces, and that results in two vehicles being able to park in this area between the yellow-painted curb and the proposed driveway, and then five vehicles being able to park from the other limit of our proposed curb cut to that existing driveway. And then inside the parking garage, we have 127 proposed parking spaces, where 125 parking spaces are required. And of that, 127, 31 are compact, measuring seven and a half feet by 15 feet, and 77 are standard size, 9 by 18. As part of the 127 parking spaces provided, four of them will be offered as rental slash car share services, and both of those are compliant with the redevelopment plan. Our proposed site plan also complies with the minimum number of EV and make-ready EV parking spaces. Those are shown here with, there's a symbol here to represent all of the EV stalls.
And you know what? Can I just interrupt for a second? I know this has been a topic of importance for the Board before, but are you taking, are we taking any credit for the EV that the law would otherwise allow?
We are not. So we are fully parked without relying on any credit to satisfy that parking demand from EV.
Is someone going to testify about how the parking is going to be assigned?
Yes.
Can I just ask real quickly how many EV stalls there were?
Yes, absolutely. So the minimum required is 19, and we are providing 20. So at the initial construction, six of those are required per state statute to be constructed with actual EV chargers on them. And the rest, it's staggered, and every three years, there's make-ready spaces, and then after three years, a certain percentage needs to be built and constructed with EV chargers as well. So while it's required that the six EV spaces with chargers are built as part of the initial construction, it is anticipated that the conduit for the make-ready stalls will all be installed as part of the initial construction.
And will somebody be discussing how these rental spaces are going to be used? Is there going to be a witness for that?
Yes, definitely if you're getting to that. Yep.
Okay.
Hey Doug, can I just jump into?
Sure.
So there was a discrepancy between the architectural and engineering plan. So you just said 20, so are you going to go with 20 because the discrepancy was at the first and Langford, at that bottom it looked like? So is it going to be 20 or 19?
It's going to be 20.
Okay, so is the space going to go where the architectural plan shows, or are we going to revise it?
Correct, it'll follow the architectural plan. Yes.
Thank you.
Doug, the two pedestrian entrances at the corner on First, are they redundant? I thought you said the two entrances to the parking area?
This corner here? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was important for us to provide a connection to the sidewalk. They both do lead to the same lobby for the parking entry, but you know, if someone's walking on the sidewalk along Langford, it's an easy access point. Or if someone's coming from the First Avenue, they have an access point as well. So we wanted to provide that flexibility. So speaking about utilities next, existing utilities are available within all three frontages. We're proposing to make our connections for water, sanitary sewer, and electric, and cable TV within the Second Avenue right-of-way, near the utility rooms, which are near the Second Avenue frontage. Electric and water meters will be internal to the building. So we do have, there's an electric room located here and a water room located here off of Second. And then as for gas meters, it's my understanding that New Jersey Natural Gas won't permit us to put the gas meters inside the building. We will try to work with them to make that happen, but I don't believe they will permit it. So discussing with the team, we determined that the best location for these gas meters would be off of this First Avenue frontage, where we do have an open picket fence here, which turns into a 6-foot-high solid fence once it faces the residences. And we could add a gate here. And then right in this area here is kind of a space that currently isn't being used for anything, where we could construct a wall to place the gas meters on. It is open air there, adjacent to the parking stalls, and they would be fully screened and hidden from public view.
And where did you mention that transformer, you're seeing the transformer is going to be? Or is there no transformer?
Don't believe we will require a transformer.
Okay. Is there one, is there some electrical or mechanical?
There is an electric room here off of Langford Street.
Yeah, on the existing property, is there any, are there any transformers or mechanical equipment on the property today?
No, there's something in the right-of-way down here. I'm not positive exactly what it is, but we're not intending to.
All right, so that's not, that's in the right-of-way, not on your property?
Correct, yes, yep.
What is the gas for cooking?
Yeah, I'm sure the architect could probably answer better, but cooking facilities, ovens.
Something, it's off of, is it?
Is HVAC gas? Yeah. HVAC as well.
So the architectural plans have the gas meters on Second Avenue, where you just said is a much better spot, so those can just be updated to the same.
Okay, understood, yes. Speaking of HVAC, they are, the air conditioning units are located on the roof. I'm sure the architect will talk about that. And fully screened from public view. Now to talk about stormwater a little bit, we, in the existing condition, the site generally slopes from west to east, away from these residences to the west. Since we are disturbing more than one acre of land, I know it's rare in the city, but we are considered a major development as defined in the city's code. So we must therefore satisfy the criteria for stormwater runoff, quantity, quality, and groundwater recharge. In the proposed condition, we are maintaining existing drainage patterns while reducing runoff peak flows for the various 2, 10, and 100-year-designed storm events to satisfy the quantity portion of the regulations. Additionally, we are proposing pervious pavement to satisfy the quality portion of the regulation as it relates to motor vehicle surface. And since we are in a state planning-designated urban redevelopment area, the project is exempt from meeting the groundwater recharge portion of the regulations, although we are proposing some infiltration as part of the pervious pavement design and rain garden design. Rain gardens are proposed along the project frontages to not only satisfy the requirement of the redevelopment plan, but also further reduce stormwater runoff. And in the proposed condition, neighboring property will be protected from any adverse runoff conditions, and runoff is actually reduced to all adjacent properties of rate.
Can you?
I can show.
Can you, go ahead.
So we do have, just to summarize the stormwater design here, I'm going to go to the grading drainage and utility plan. So underneath the garage slab, there's an extensive detention system proposed. It's shaped funny like this because we were avoiding the building columns. So that handles the bulk of the quantity reduction. And then, as you can tell from the site plan, there are a few instances where the parking spaces actually are open-air and protrude from the facade of the building. So there is the opportunity there for, when it rains, for those spaces to capture runoff. So all of the spaces that overhang the building all along this western side, there's a dot hatch located there, and all of those are pervious pavement, which will treat the water for quality purposes, and then ultimately connect into that larger detention basin underneath the building. And then working around the frontages of the property, we have several rain gardens in the green spaces. There was not an opportunity along Langford because there's a 5-foot setback there. But along First and Second Avenues, we did have the opportunity to put rain gardens in there, which, you know, provide more of a benefit for infiltration, water quality treatment, and also help us with reductions.
And Doug, real quick, so those two inlets on the northwest, excuse me, northeast corner, are those curb pieces, the old curb inlets? I just want to verify that they're going to be reconstructed to be inlets?
Yes, so these, from everything I can tell and visiting the site, there was two inlets existing there. They're really old, I want to.
Yeah, it's just like that curb, it's like a little curb piece.
It's almost like not even an inlet, it's just like a, there's like a gap in the curb. So they're like a really, they've been there a very long time. So we are going to upgrade those and put two B-inlets with curb pieces there, which will help, you know, facilitate better drainage along Second Avenue and Langford, because those two streets drain towards those two inlets. And then ultimately, there is an existing manhole here in the sidewalk on the corner of Second and Langford, which we are going to replace. And ultimately, all of our stormwater will be connected through that manhole to the existing drainage infrastructure within Second Avenue, which is where everything winds up today, which is why I mentioned we're maintaining existing drainage patterns, albeit at a much reduced rate.
Doug could hit it on the, hit the nail on the head. He did it. The only thing I'd recommend, Doug, is maybe like if you could look into moving the manhole out of the landing in the curb ramp, just because it could be a. just because it could be a pain, I mean, just, you don't have, just look into, because it could be a pain to get that to be your two percent.
Yes, happy to do that.
Absolutely, yep.
Will someone be discussing who's going to maintain the rain gardens?
So, there is going to be, uh, a property manager for the property, um, and that could be part of their responsibility.
Um, I would ask that it has to be, the rain gardens need to be maintained, they cannot just survive. They have to be maintained.
And we are going to, um, we did create an operations and maintenance manual for all stormwater.
Mm-huh.
Um, that'll be filed with the deed for the property, um, so that'll outline what they need to do as part of that maintenance, and, uh, absolutely, we can agree to that.
And which watershed did this go to?
Deal Lake.
This goes to Deal Lake? Um, I have a question about the rain garden that is closest to Lo, to, um, Langford. Um, is there, uh, would there be any benefit, and I'm asking our professional as well, would there be any benefit of making that a larger a rain garden and removing that one walkway since it's duplicative, duplicative?
You could, sure, yeah, you could remove, so you're saying coming off of.
Would that be a benefit for this development?
You'd be able to gain a little bit of capacity, like Doug mentioned, they're already compliant, uh, with all, all stormwater quantity. Um, but you certainly could, it'll add a little bit more space and vegetation.
Would the, would the applicant be, uh, amenable to that, or would, is the walkway something that, uh, has been requested by someone? Because there are two of them right there.
Yes, um...
That could be.
I believe there, uh...
Because any way that we can capture more water is a good thing, and this seems to not be that complicated, but, hey, I'm not a professional.
I think it might impact the, the public art that was proposed there, but if...
The architecture, so, I just, I'm not, I don't touch on public art too much, but the architecture shows the public art to be the screening of the, uh, like, the vent louvers of the garage.
Okay.
I mean, if that's, if that's something that you think that, that that might be, uh, an issue because of the public art, we, let's wait till we get to there. But, my request is that the more water we can capture, the better it is for the city, for all of us.
Okay.
So, if that's, if nobody, if people are amenable to removing that walkway, or reconfiguring that walkway somehow to get the rain garden to be larger, that would be fabio, fabulous.
Okay, understood.
And, um, because we kind of touched on it also about the, the walkway that's up by the trash room? What's the intention there for that walkway? Up on the, uh, on the Second Avenue side, what's, is that where we feel that the garbage cans are going to go?
So, at the time of, so we are going to be using, uh, refuse is actually the next item for me to talk about.
Oh, okay, so I can wait, I can wait.
No, it was, no, it's good timing, so, uh, we are proposing refuse and recycling to be handled by a private Carter. Um, so, it'll be kept within the trash room, uh, except for at the time of pickup, where it will be wheeled out, uh, to the curb for, for immediate pickup. So, they are going to utilize that walkway to achieve that. Um, so I think, I think we're gonna need that walkway. Um, I think that would be best to keep. Um, it will be, to start, we're, we're proposing to remove refuse from the property uh, twice per week and recycling once per week, but it will be monitored by, uh, the property manager, and if needed, the frequency of pickup can be increased. And now, for the...
That is private pickup?
That is private, yes, pickup, yes. As for, uh, the lighting design, uh, if you pull up the lighting plan here. So, it's a pretty straightforward lighting design, um, it consists of wall-mounted LED lights, uh, which are labeled as fixture letter A, um, for the driveway and walkways. And then, there's also lighting inside the parking garage, which is labeled as fixture B. Um, all, like, proposed lights are fully sheer, shielded, uh, dark sky-friendly lights. There was a comment in, uh, both the professionals' reports, um, about the three thousand K lights inside the garage, uh, which technically does not, uh, comply with the ordinance requirement of twenty-seven hundred. Uh, we would prefer to keep the three thousand K lights inside the garage only because, um, it's more of a, a building code issue. Uh, I don't know that twenty-seven hundred Kelvin would satisfy building code criteria. Not an expert in building code criteria, but, um, I feel as though it would be easier to achieve with three thousand K lights. But all the exterior lights, which will be seen, um, are twenty-seven hundred K, and they are LED and fully cut off and fully shielded.
If that's something that the applicant wants to go with the three thousand, that's an exception. Um, because I haven't heard this before, I haven't heard this, I, I haven't heard it before, I mean, if you guys have...
They, they definitely make the twenty-seven hundreds, uh, we've seen in the past, uh, is your, is your concern, like, the amount of lighting for code, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I know, uh, you know, local ordinances have well-defined requirements for zoning purposes. Um, I'm just not intimately familiar with the building code requirements for lighting inside a garage, so I wanted to make sure that that can be achieved. Um, but if we feel as though, and you guys have seen it in the past and, and have seen it built, then I don't think we, we would be opposed to using twenty-seven hundred K.
So, we have, we have seen it in the past, those were all the applications that video played it, yep.
I mean, unless you want to go for variance.
Is it, is it, Doug and Sam, is it a variance, but, inside, you can only have twenty-seven hundred?
It, it is part of the ordinance.
It is part of the ordinance, yeah.
And we, so we'll agree to the twenty-seven hundred K inside the garage as well.
Okay.
And we did take a look at that walkway, uh, to the parking entry, and we'll be able to increase that rain garden size, um, as was suggested by the chair.
Um, I, I know that, I can't read it, I don't know if anybody else can, but I'd, I'd like to know what, what are the numbers on the borders, so that, is there any spillage, is there, so the neighbors aren't impacted?
Yep, yep, I'll definitely touch on that, um, I was just gonna get to that, so we're...
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we're not proposing any spillage, um, onto adjoining property, I know the numbers are small here, but, um, I'll run you, I'll run you down the line here, so you see a lot of zero-point-zeros, this is our property line. Um, so, prior to the light reaching the property line, all the way along that western side, uh, it does get to zero before getting to the property line, um, so we're not proposing any spillage along any property lines, uh, to, for our neighbors. Um, and as was a comment in the professionals' reports, we will ensure that our lighting design does take into account any light levels from above, although, um, any rooftop-mounted lights will be designed as to not have any impact on the ground level. Um, in here, you could actually see, we actually, uh, modeled the existing, uh, cobra heads out at the street as well, to give a full picture um, of the lighting for, for you and the board professionals to review. Um, and we're absolutely happy to work with the board planner and engineer to make sure that, um, the lights inside the garage, uh, there was a comment regarding, we do have some openings in the garage, so we want to make sure that, um, there's no it, that the light source is not visible if you're a pedestrian on the sidewalk, and I think there's been some other projects in Asbury that may have had an issue with this, so we would, we want to avoid that as well, um, and so if you're walking on the sidewalk, um, we'll make sure to mount the lights high enough in the ceiling, um, to prevent sort of the light source being, being visible from the sidewalk as you're walking along.
So, where, so where can, where can the public actually see the lights in the garage? Where on this, so that I can see the numbers, so you can zoom in on the numbers so I can see them?
Sure, so I guess it, it's really, um...
We might need the architect.
Yeah, I'll pull up the architect.
I mean, whatever, whichever one tells us is fine, we, whatever tells us what kind of spillage there is.
Yep, yep, so the, the numbers you're looking at on this plan represent the lighting levels on the ground, so it doesn't really give you an indication of the source of the light, when you're looking at the light that you don't want to see and be blinded by, um, the light source itself, so, um, if I pull up the architectural plans quickly, and go to the elevation views. So, for example, this is the Langford Avenue elevation, and there are requirements within the redevelopment plan, um, for screening in the garage, which we do comply with. So, these are, if you look here, these are the few locations where, um, there is a screen on, on the opening, but they are vented. Um, so, inside is the parking garage lighting, and ultimately, we want to make sure that our lights are mounted high enough in the ceiling that when you're walking on the sidewalk, uh, you wouldn't see the source of the light inside the garage. Obviously, the garage will appear to be illuminated, but, um, we want to try to hide the actual source of the light when looking in, uh, from the street.
Before we go into the lighting, obviously, there's the lights that are gonna be installed in the building, uh, but the cars will be driving around the parking garage as well. And one thing that I, concerns me in these developments is headlights shining out, out the back of the building, because there is no back of the building. So, if you just tell us about how that's gonna impact the neighboring properties, what sort of, um, screening offensive there is?
Yes, absolutely, and that's a good point that you raise, um, so we do have, we should probably mark this too, this, this includes the landscaping that we're proposing. Um, it's titled "The Landscape Layout," also has a date of seven-thirty, twenty-twenty-five, and again, this is, the plans that are shown here and proposed are the same exact ones that were, uh, submitted in the site plan.
We'll mark this, uh, eight-three?
Eight-three, yes.
Eight-three, yeah?
And Doug, just for the record, who's this prepared by? This was prepared by, uh, our office, but also Brian left our, uh, our landscape.
Thank you.
So, starting on the, uh, First Avenue side, uh, there is a fence that starts with, starts from the corner of the building. Um, along this stretch here, I know it's kind of hard to see, but I'm highlighting it with the hand, this is an open-style fence, and as soon as it makes this corner, it's six-foot tall, as soon as it makes this, this turn here, um, it's a solid six-foot-high fence all the way along this western property line. And it, it follows, meanders along the property line, um, until it reaches the facade on Second Avenue, where it makes a ninety-degree turn and opens back up again, so that's an open-style fence here. But all along this, um, western property line is a solid fence, and we're also proposing, as you can see, along that entire western facade, um, a good amount of evergreen and Four Seasons landscaping, so I do not anticipate that any headlight glare will impact, uh, any of the neighbors to the west, um, at all. Moving on to signage, we're not proposing any signs for the building except for the building address, uh, which we will agree to make that comply with the ordinance. Um, and then, in terms of proposed variances and design waivers, we're not proposing any as it, as it relates to, um, the redevelopment plan, um, and to zoning. Um, in terms of outside agency approvals, we will need, uh, Treatment Works approval from the NJDEP. Uh, we are not located in a CAFRA planning area, and we're not located in a flood hazard area. Um, we will require approval from the Soil Conservation District, um, and we do have, uh, an approval in hand already from the Monmouth County Planning Board. Even though we don't front on a county road, um, we are near some of the county drainage facilities, so they wanted, they, they reviewed our, our application and stormwater management design, and, uh, actually had no comments on it and approved it, so that was, um, that was good.
Are there any, uh, remediation issues for the site?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And if I could, uh, I have the Leona Savaki in review letter that I will go through just to address, um, each comment. I actually don't, I don't.
Okay, no, I'm, no, 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 no. Only the witness can testify, and the attorney, sorry.
So, has there been any environmental investigation for this site? Excuse me, when your client purchased the property, did they conduct a phase one?
Should we, have, you want to address now?
If your, if your client talks to you and you make the recommendation, that's fine.
Yes, there was a phase one completed, my apologies.
And so, that, so, and did it uncover issues that require remediation?
Yes.
Hold on, if you're gonna talk, you gotta handle it.
Alright.
Yeah, bring the maximum, turn the subside, really, just start.
So, as, as part of the phase one report, uh, there were some soils that need to be exported, and that was the only condition to remove any, um, environmental concerns. Okay, um...
Before, just before you run, can we touch on the, the four spaces, or was that going to be someone else's rental spaces?
Ah, sorry, yes, um, let me pull that up here. So, they were shown on the site plan, um, there are four spaces that are nine-by-eighteen stalls, um, centralized in the property here, um, labeled here accordingly. Uh, there'll be signage there, and they were, you know, part of the overall, uh, parking count, uh, for the project, but that's the, that's the location for them.
And just to, uh, make the board aware, the reason why I'm bringing it up, so it's part of the one thousand-one First Avenue redevelopment plan, uh, which states a reservation of five percent of the total units, which is four spaces or four spaces. So, they're proposing four spaces, and I believe it's for Zipcar, is, Doug and I have had a conversation prior to this, but it's for Zipcar, is that right, Doug?
Yes, uh, rental, Zipcar, uh, basically, if, if a, if someone living in one of the residences doesn't have a vehicle, but, you know, if some circumstances arises where they might want to rent a vehicle for a couple of weeks, this would give them the opportunity to have a parking space.
Yep, and the, and they are compliant on the amount of spaces, so I'm not trying to say that, I just don't know how, uh, this is my opinion, how realistic it is for those spaces, so if the board was favorable, they could go the other way, no, am I wrong?
Is there some arrangement already with Zipcar for, for, um, for Zipcars to live there in those spaces?
So, my understanding, um, is that it was added as, as part of the redevelopment plan several years ago, I, I I think it started to gain popularity many years ago, I don't know that it, um, you know, it really has taken off much, and that
Correct.
a lot of people may not actually be using them, um, but, being that it is in the redevelopment plan and we wanted to comply with it, um, we did add that, add those parking spaces, um, and we'll certainly add them and, and see if there's, you know, a market for it, if there's a need for it, um, and we have that, that availability to provide.
When somebody's gonna talk about, again, how the, how the parking spaces are managed?
Yes, yes.
Get us some about that.
Sure.
And then they'll talk about how these rentals will be managed?
Yes, oh, correct.
Well, they also speak to the number of compact spaces and the choice for why that was chosen?
Yes, so the compact spaces, they're, uh, they're seven-and-a-half by fifteen, um, the ordinance permits, um, a maximum of, uh, I have that here in the chart. So, there's, uh, twenty-five percent of the parking spaces. So there's 25% of the parking spaces are permitted to be compact. So at 127 spaces, that's 31.75 spaces, and we are proposing 31 compact spaces.
So you comply? Is that what you're saying?
We comply, yes. Yeah, and as the, as the parking spaces are rented, they are going to be part of the rent for the units. And obviously, if someone has a compact vehicle and can utilize those spaces, they would, they have the opportunity to use the compact spaces. And we have 77 nine-by-18 as well.
Wait, is, I'm sorry, you said you have 127 parking spaces?
127 parking spaces, yes.
Thirty-one are compact.
Correct.
And there's more in right share?
Yes, so the, the, there's 127 total, 31 are compact, and, let's see here.
The compact, right, so that's a separate?
Yeah, they're, they're separate.
So it's 35 from 127. And then there's EVs, and then there's EVs, right?
All the EVs are full-size.
Yes. So I think, I think my number of 77 was wrong, but.
Seventy-seven.
So 96. So there's 96 regular-size spaces, 31 compact, and the four rental Zipcar, those are included in the 127, and so are the EV as well.
And the EVs are all the full-size?
The EVs are all full-size, yes.
And then, when you're open, like only a certain percentage of the EVs will be operationally ready?
Required to have, six of them will be required as part of the initial construction to actually have the charger installed, and the remaining will be make-ready.
It'll, it'll be a little bit of a puzzle in the beginning for management to juggle, probably. Users and their cars and spaces.
Well, the whole idea is that, you know, you have 104 units, and everyone, assuming everyone has a car, that there are 104 spaces that who doesn't have a compact or a full-size, who doesn't have any EV?
Which is why, again, it's a management company, and they're going to probably juggle who has which spaces, which days, what times. I have an EV, I don't charge every day. They don't need to be charged every day.
Well, we're talking about parking, is there any sort of alert system at the garage door?
That was a suggestion in the professionals' letters, and we are happy to provide that, yes.
Auditory, visual?
It'll be both visual and auditory at the 25, 24-foot-wide two-way driveway, yes.
And how will, how will people, are people getting in with a FOB? Are they getting in, are the, are the doors just open, or, or is that part of parking management?
So our, our plan was to, everyone to, one, one space would be included in the rent, and to get a hang tag for the vehicle as part of that. So you'll have, the parking will be open, there's not assigned spaces, and it'll be managed by the property manager, who will enforce that every vehicle in there has a valid parking permit. At the moment, no, we aren't proposing a gated access, but it will be managed by the property manager to make sure that no one's parking in there.
So they're not really managed, they're just managed, access is the only that's managed? The spaces aren't managed?
Correct, they're non-assigned, yes.
Okay, so there's not much management.
You said a gated, is it a garage door, yes?
No.
There's no garage door?
It's just open?
Yeah. But then, then what's the signal?
So it's, it's based on motion. It's a motion-activated sensor for the.
Yeah, the car rolls up.
Car rolls up to leave, there'll be a warning.
That is correct, yes.
So is there no, is, all right, so then, you're in your car, you've pulled in, you get out of your car, how do you get into the, how do you get into the building? What do you do?
So there are, on the corner of Langford and First, there's a stair, stair and elevator.
Is it secured?
Secured.
Please say yes.
Yeah.
Again, maybe the architect.
All right, let's hope the architect says that.
Talk about the property management, we'll talk more about that.
Yeah.
This property manager is going to be very busy with rain gardens and parking.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, that gate's not, I'm not crazy about that gate decision. But, but we haven't talked about, the parking has not, management has not been discussed yet, so let's move on.
Doug, can I ask you about the corner of First and Langford? Sorry, Second and Langford?
Yes.
You're proposing this, you know, rounded pedestrian ramp into the street, probably because the two of them, the two crosswalks come so close together that it's hard to get two ramps in there. But we typically don't do any round ramps like that in a city. We try to do single ramps with domes facing straight into the crosswalk. If you could change that to two ramps, you could take a look at Asbury Avenue and Bond or Asbury and Emery, we just did the same kind of situation over there. It worked out pretty well with DOT. I think it worked there, I think it'll work here, too.
Okay, yeah, we did do that on the corner of Langford and.
Yes.
First, I think we were, you know, working with the current crosswalks that are there. It may require a bit of an angled crosswalk.
If you look at Asbury, I think you'll see that you won't really have to move the crosswalks. Asbury and what? Asbury and Bond or Asbury and Emery.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask one, one individual decision not before they go on to you?
Let me not be his, let's not his decision.
I'll have you on my list.
I have the same question.
Yeah, the guys in the chairs are chomping at the bit.
I mean, it would seem like at night it would be more still as you like, right?
Among other things.
Okay, what's next?
All right, I'll run through the engineer's memo, just to.
Okay, Doug's touched every portion of the, through his testimony, he's touched every portion in our letter so far. I think he's done a, the insight has done a good job designing engineering-wise for this project. So if there's any questions, you can.
I think he's, I think he's used to us.
Right, yeah, I agree, Stan.
All right, so you're satisfied?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think the only thing I have for, for engineering is streetscape improvements. We had asked for maybe some bike racks and benches and things.
And we're happy to provide those, absolutely, yes.
I have one question. Is part of this application is the subdivision or consolidation of lots? Is that what we're doing?
Consolidate.
Yeah, okay. So that alleyway, is that public alleyway, is that privately owned? We say it's being vacated.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 10-foot right-of-way. I'll, I'll pull up our survey that was submitted here.
So the city has that vacated?
Yes.
So that's something that, that, if we approve the consolidation of lots, that still has to be approved by the mayor and council? Like, I feel like we don't have to, okay.
Yeah, so they would just have to provide a meets and balances of the vacation or the city.
It's a thing on both sides, they're going to get both halves out of there.
Just wanted to make sure anyone approving something we didn't have the power to approve.
Is the, is part of the engineering testimony have anything to do with the removal of trees, or is that someone else?
I can touch on that. So there are, let me go to site plan. So this is our existing conditions, site preparation plan, which shows the.
Is this all back to [inaudible]?
It is, yeah, it is sheet number C200, should be the second sheet of the site plan. So just to touch on, it's, it's a largely vacant lot, but just going around through each frontage, there are a number of street trees along First Avenue that are existing. No street trees along Langford, and no street trees along Second Avenue. There are a couple small four- and six-inch tree along Langford, and a 12-inch tree along Langford, which is supposed to be removed. And then the remainder of the existing trees are along the western property line. And there's, it's kind of, it looks like kind of overgrowth at this point. There's a mix of trees along this western property line that all of those inside the property line are proposed to be removed.
And can you just, just talk about something? If there was like a tree that looked like it was on the property line, what happens there to the neighbor? On the, a little bit further down closer to First, it looked like there was one on the property line. What happens there?
This one here?
Because, because that, that's right on the neighbor's property line, correct? Or is that?
It looks like it is on our, it, it, it's hard to tell visually on the plan, but when we visited the site, we marked the trees that were, the trunk was on our property.
Right.
So I do believe that one is on our property line. I mean, on our property, on our side of the property line.
So tell me what happens, and this might be from our professionals or if anybody else knows. Like, let's say you take out that tree, which is proposed, and for some reason you impact the, the neighbor's fence. What happens? What happens to the neighbor?
That whole fence, it would have to be replaced, but that whole fence line is being replaced.
But the neighbor has a fence already, passed by today. Neighbor already has a fence, what happens to that fence? Or are you not doing anything to that fence?
If, if the fence line is damaged as a result of our construction, we will agree to, to remedy that situation, that's only fair.
Okay, because, because you're building a fence next, next to it anyway, correct?
Yes.
You're, you're building one anyway. I just want to make sure that none of the residences are impacted by this. Okay.
It's probably prudent for the applicant to have a pre-construction meeting.
Yeah.
And walk the fence line with the joiners and make sure they identify any areas of concern.
And we, we have no problem with that.
Okay.
Did you say there were no street trees on First?
There are street trees on First.
And they're remaining, and they're not being touched?
They're proposed to remain, yes.
And there's two on Langford?
They're not really street trees. The, the one on First, the ones on First Avenue are true street trees. There's a couple smaller trees that are on Langford. One's a 12-inch tree that is going to be removed, and the other's grouping a four-inch and a six-inch small tree. Both of them are on our side of the sidewalk, so they're not true street trees. And we are proposing, as our landscape architect will talk about, new street trees along both frontages, all three frontages are.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, you said new, so you're not moving the ones on First?
No, we are not.
You said you're going to move.
I think there might be one, I might be wrong. I know, let's pull up. No, so First Avenue, the street trees are going to remain, and then the proposed street trees are along Langford Street, you can see with the bigger green circles there. And Second Avenue and Langford have the new street trees.
Did one of your reports say that the system of street trees will look so great? Or, or plans and stuff?
So most of First Avenue's are not, sorry. Most of the ones on First Avenue are not terrible. I mean, they're terribly pruned, but they, you know, they're, they don't have obvious terrible rot and damage, like the classic.
They're not the worst.
Terrible ones. You know, as construction goes, we may see them go bad, and then, you know, they may have to do replacement.
And the, so the existing trees that, that are on First Avenue are not in the driveway areas, that true?
No, right.
They are not.
They should do protection anyway, even if it's, you're saying.
Oh, yeah, should be protection.
Tree protection, you said construction might go bad, but they should be protected during construction.
Yeah, there will be tree protection provided.
Doug, do you have any more to add?
No, I think that.
Just then in conclusion, before I defer to the chair and board or public questions, just with the exception of the lighting intensification that we talked about, the 2700 versus 3000, which we've agreed to comply, are you aware of any design exceptions or waivers that, that we need, or are you thinking we're, we're complying?
No, we're fully compliant.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no further questions for the witness at this time, and I certainly defer to you and the board.
Any, does, does anyone on the board have any further questions of this witness?
Yes, excuse me, yes, I have. I'm looking at the survey, and I'm looking at the existing fence line. And if I recall our fence ordinance, we need a one-foot setback from the property line. Is that correct, Donna?
No.
It's not?
Only on the, on the bright of way, not interior lot lines.
It, it seems to me, especially if you look at the, on the western boundary line, and coming from the south, the existing fence line meanders all over the place. Is there any way that the fence could be installed so there's no, no, no gore between the, the two fences? If you end up with a fence and you have a foot and a half or so between your fence and their fence, it's going to be an area that is going to collect trash, you won't be able to get in there to cut lawn or anything. I'd like to see something where the fences are contiguous, so that you don't have that type of problem.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think the ideal solution would be to work with the neighbor to replace that fence, so that there is only one fence on the property line. There are, and it's clear here on the survey that there's a number of areas where their fence encroaches onto our property, so we'll have to work with them. Obviously, they think that, like I said, the ideal solution would be to have one fence there and make sure that it fully secures their lot as well as our lot, and that one fence along the common property line would be the ideal solution.
Now, if you can accommodate that, that would be, I think, a big plus on this.
Sure, and then that's a very valid concern, and may I respectfully suggest that, as Donna indicated, we're going to, if we're fortunate enough to have approval, one of the conditions would be a pre-construction meeting, and also a pre-meeting with the neighbors to walk the fence line, and that would certainly be topic number one.
Any, but any other board members have any other questions?
Yeah, so you had already agreed to visual and auditory warnings for the parking. Let me say a visual warning. Have we talked about the flash of light? Have we talked about changing the pavement on the sidewalk? What, what did you have?
It's a, it's a small sign that, the one that I've seen most commonly. It's a small sign that's mounted to the face of the building on either side of the entrance that says "Car Coming." And.
It lights up.
It lights, it blinks, it's not a super brilliant light, just the letters light up, and then it also has an audio alarm that indicates a car's coming.
Any other questions from any board member of this witness? Any questions from our professionals? No? Any questions from the public, and if there are, please go to the mic. I just want to remind you that you can ask questions about anything that's been testified to.
Hello?
Can I ask?
Stand by yourself and give us your address.
Okay, Claire Higgins, and I live at 1001 Second Avenue in the law office right across the street. Okay, first question, can you re-explain how the garbage is being picked up?
Sure. So there is, on the Second Avenue side, there's a refuse room where it'll be collected internally, there'll be a compactor in there, and then pickup will be by a private parking service. And at the time of pickup, you won't see garbage bins, you know, out on the street, what you'll have is everything internal to the building, except for at the time of pickup, where they'll be wheeled out to the street for pickup, and it'll happen, you know, within a matter of minutes, really.
And what about the cars that are going to be parked in front of the building, like where will the garbage truck have the space?
So they'll have to pause there for the pickup if, if there's not an available parking space open, they'll have to pause within, you know, as far right in the lane there that they can, so that the pickup can happen at the street.
And what if there's damage to a car from the garbage pickup? If there's going to be like garbage cans and people throwing things in the garbage truck?
Yeah, I mean, that would probably be reported to the police, and, you know, part of the property manager's obligation, as their duties as the property manager.
All right, second question, is there going to be any yellow painted curb on either side of the driveway? Or can cars park like directly right up to the edge of it?
So we're not proposing any yellow painted curb, there is some adjacent to the intersection here, but starting at the two curb apron flares, the cars will be able to park, starting there, and it's not currently striped, so they would, they would start there, you know, I gave the distances earlier, from this, the edge of this curb cut to this existing curb cut, and then from this curb cut to the yellow painted on First Avenue. There's room for two vehicles here and five within this area.
Okay, so no like buffer space for checking the traffic?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there, excuse me, is there any required site triangle when somebody's going down the driveway, are there flares, or is it a rectangle?
There's a two foot flare on each side, yes, and we do show the site triangle as well here on the plan.
So then the voters can look in either direction and see traffic?
Correct, and they've got, they've got clear line of sight. Yes.
Okay, and last question, I won't stay up here too long, how many parking spots are there minus EV now and future and these ride share spots, like how many spots are there for everyday use?
So there's 127, the EV, as I mentioned, there's only six that are going to be installed with chargers. And four of the parking spaces will be for the rental Zipcar Service. But those are, those are contained within that 127 parking space.
So like 117 parking spots are available? For everyday, like if I don't have an EV or I'm not in a Zipcar? Because I can't park my car in an EV spot if I'm not in EV, correct? Or a ride share spot?
Well, they would, the EV would be, if you had an electric vehicle as part of, you know, obviously you would get an EV parking space, but there's only six that are going to be installed with chargers initially, so the rest are considered make ready, where the conduit's there, the equipment's there for it to be a future EV stall, but it's not a full EV charging station.
So someone with a non-EV car can park there?
Correct, yes.
In any six of those spots?
In the make ready. As far as EV goes, I mean, I think that'll be something that the building management will have to manage, depending on the market and who has an EV and who doesn't. Obviously, they want to provide the availability for people with electric vehicles to have that charging, but at the end of the day, it is still a parking space, and if, you know, if it was needed, it could be used as a parking space.
Okay, and I also believe that there's going to be further testimony about parking by someone else too, so that's okay, but there's still, we have questions as well. So that will come, that will also come a little bit later.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Mary Kinyonis, my husband Louis Rosen and I have the house that's, the property that's lot nine, so we're right adjacent, the address is 1014 Second Avenue. So I know that there's going to be further parking discussion, but I'm trying to figure out where all those outdoor parking spots are going to exit from.
So right behind them, I'll zoom in a little bit here so you can see it better. This is your property here, lot nine.
Right.
All of these parking spaces have direct access behind them to this 23 foot wide drive aisle, so they will back out and utilize the 23 foot wide drive aisle. The only place any cars will be entering or exiting the property is right here on First Avenue.
Okay, so people are going to be pulling in on First, driving all the way through the interior?
Correct.
And pulling into those lots, okay?
Yes.
We are delighted to hear that you'd like to meet with us, because we haven't had any outreach at all about this project up until the letter that we got about this meeting, so we are very, very happy and can certainly give you our contact information. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, ma'am.
It's all right.
Yes.
Yeah, this is question time, you're making.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
You're making your statement.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make a statement.
It's okay, you're no lawyer, I don't think. If you were a lawyer, I'd say why aren't you testifying instead of asking questions?
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay, okay. Okay, then next witness.
Next witness, Dan Zanetto. He is our architect.
Okay, let's go.
I do. Daniel Zanetto, Z A N E T O.
And you are a licensed architect from the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Has your license status changed since the beginning of July, since your last year?
No. Yes.
You're good to go.
Thank you. Dan, just real quickly, you're familiar with this application, correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the plans which have been submitted, your office prepared the architectural plans, correct?
Yes.
All right, why don't you, just like I did with our engineer, why don't you just give a general architectural description, hitting what the plan is about and architectural design details, materials, views, I know the board is concerned about what people are going to see, what the neighbors are going to see, what all elevations are going to look like, so you've been here before, so.
What's your architectural plans as a four?
These are the plans that were submitted, so we need to mark them.
What is the date on you?
This isn't what, it doesn't testify, does it?
No.
Okay, so then we need to mark.
The date is 5/27/25.
Can you tell how many pages?
There are 10 pages.
Thank you.
Fair by you or under your supervision?
Yes. Okay, so we've given some testimony already about the project overall, just to summarize, there are 104 units, including 20% affordable units, that's 21 affordable units. The breakdown of the unit types are as follows, there are 12 studio apartments, 19 one bedrooms, 16 one bedroom with den, 36 two bedrooms, and the affordable units breakdown has four one bedrooms, 12 two bedroom, and five three bedrooms. The building itself is five stories, there are four residential floors over a ground floor parking level, the height of the building is 54 feet plus a five foot elevator overrun. It is a podium type construction with a non-combustible ground floor and a, a stick framed residential floors above that, the building will be fully sprinkled, and the massing of the building, as already testified, has been coordinated with the setbacks of the adjacent properties, that's one of the changes that were made in the redevelopment plan over the past year or so. I'd like to just quickly go through the floor plans to start, I'll start with the ground floor. So we've talked a lot about this floor already, the parking level will have 127 parking spaces. In addition to the main parking field, we have a lobby off of Second Avenue that accesses a stair and an elevator and mailroom space, so mailboxes and shelves for packages. Directly off of that lobby, there will be a bike room that will have space for 56, yes, 56 bicycles and vertical racks, and there's also miscellaneous utility spaces, electrical room along Langford, a water room along Second Avenue, the trash room that we've talked about already, and then additionally, inside the parking field, there's a second means of egress with the stair and the elevator, and a additional parking entry on the corner of Langford and First Avenue.
Dan, could you go to the western frontage? So, so there's no building wall, right, those are columns?
These are columns, this is, this is open, as you see, the parking extends beyond the footprint of the building in this area, so that's where you see the darker gray shading is the area under the building.
So that's, yeah, so then I'll forget, A8, which was the western elevation, so that gray portion, that's open, right, that's not like building, if you go to A8, right, so, like behind the fence, right, that's where you're showing the western elevation of the building. Right, so that's the fence right there.
Right, you're seeing the fence, and then you're seeing, you're seeing.
That's open, that's.
Into the garage, that's right, that's open.
Space, right.
So where the brown brick, that's the bottom of the building.
Right, and the gray space below it is open.
The gray space below is open.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no.
That will come into, you know, the talk before about.
The lighting.
Seeing the source of light, right, so.
Right.
Interior, the ceiling, inside the garage is higher than that lowest, lower course of that round brick there, right?
Correct, it is, and we're happy to work with the planner to come up with a detail to better shield the lighting, we'll work to get those lights placed as high up as possible on the ceiling, and then if, if it makes sense to build some sort of a valance for that wall, to drop the top edge of that to better shield the lighting.
Thank you.
May I ask that fence is, what, six feet high?
Six foot solid fence in the back. All right, so moving up through the building.
I'm sorry, as long as we're on that topic, Dan.
Yeah.
Roughly, what is the height?
The height of the ceiling?
The garage.
The garage, so the bottom of the slab will be at about 11 feet, and the opening, I believe, is at nine feet, so you do already have a two foot differential, but we can look at that to drop it even further if needed.
Yeah, so there's that sliver, so that's what we're trying to count.
Dan, before you move up, can you tell us about the secondary elevator and stair on the ground level? And how that's protected, secured?
Right, so all of the entry into the actual building, building spaces would be controlled with a card access or a key fob access, so that would include, you know, the doors on the, the exterior doors into the parking garage, and the lobby, the bike room, all these spaces would be accessed with card access, same with the elevator and the stair lobby here.
But somebody could just walk in from.
Someone could, we, you know. We were, we were trying to keep the option open to have a door or not on the garage, you know, if it's something that the board feels strongly, then, you know, we could include a door on the, on the garage and have the card access into the, for the vehicles as well.
I am one person, but I have, I, I would like a garage door, because anyone can walk in, and anyone can be parking there, and anyone can jump out at anyone at any time. So let's, let's keep it secure.
All right, we'll agree to add a door there.
Please.
That would be controlled with either a card access or a key fob.
Please, thank you.
Okay, moving through the building, and the residential floors are fairly typical, there is a bit of a stepping that happens at the exterior of the building to help break up the scale of it, but essentially, the floor layouts are similar here for the first three floors, floors two, three, and four, you've got a mix of one bedroom, studio, one bedroom with den, and two beds, and then a one bed, two bed, and three bed affordable units.
Can you, can you tell us where, do all bedrooms have windows?
All bedrooms have windows.
Like real windows, or transoms, or what do they have?
Real windows.
Real windows, so walk me through the den, tell me about the ones that have one bedroom and den, could you show us?
So this is, this is one here, it's on a corner, the living space has a window, the bedroom has a window, the den is off of the living space, and that could be an office space or, you know, a bonus room of some sort, not, not a bedroom, not intended for a bedroom.
Is there any ventilation in that room?
But it doesn't have a closet, right?
It doesn't have a closet, no.
Is there ventilation?
Is there mechanical ventilation?
Yes.
Besides what's provided throughout the unit, no additional ventilation.
And how many of them are there, you said there were, how many in the, there?
Throughout the project, there's 16 one bedrooms with dens, and they're really just larger one bedroom units.
So where's the den in that room?
The one that I'm looking at here, the den, is this room here.
Is there, is there an actual door?
There's a door.
There is a door.
The label's on it.
And then if you look at another one across the hall from that, the den would be this, this back room here, so you have a living space with a window to the courtyard, bedroom with a window to the courtyard, bathroom, kitchen, and the den in the back corner.
The one next to that one has a closet in the den.
That one does. We can remove that closet, that's not a problem.
Well, show us, show us that den, which den? That's a den.
This one here, one bedroom den 228. So the living space has a window into the courtyard, the one bedroom has a window into the courtyard, and the den is adjacent to the other bedroom.
With no closets?
This one is showing a closet? This, this one is showing a closet?
Then it's a bedroom. Let's, am I right? Tell me, tell, talk me, talk me, planners.
The code, no, that's not a defining characteristic.
A closet is not a defining characteristic of a bedroom, no.
Because it could be like a lending closet, or a-
Entertainment unit.
Right.
Server rack.
So it's the floor that's, that's between the bedroom and the den, it's too close, that's right?
Dan, what's the size of that room? You have an idea?
Yeah, it looks like the same size as a bedroom. It's right next to it.
It's, it's slightly smaller, um, you know, we could certainly remove the closet from this, this room if that's a, something that would please the board.
Um, so, one of the, one of the things we're seeing in other towns is when there's a den, um, it doesn't have a closet, but it also doesn't have a door. It has, and the opening is much larger, it's like a five-foot opening, not a three, two, two-six or three-foot opening, so that it's not so easily an enclosed room. It's actually-
So like a cased opening instead of a door.
So is it, um-
Which again, you know, if you're trying to have a home office, it's helpful to have a door, but at the same time, yes, I understand the constraints, you know, that were answered.
Is a den, is a den in Jersey a habitable space?
Yes. Well, every space in this, um, in those dwelling units are habitable space. A sleeping room is different, and it could be, so like in order to have a studio apartment, the, the part where you sleep and the part where you eat-
Yeah.
-is a sleeping room. The part where you go to the bathroom is not part of your sleeping room.
No, I understand that, like, I, you know, the habitable space-
Right, so that's why, right, so that-
Has that ventilation light in there? But that doesn't include a kitchen or a bathroom, I don't know about that.
It can include a kitchen and a bathroom. So, um, that's why, and so now they're, again, they keep tweaking the code, they keep tweaking the code, you can have mechanical ventilation, so you don't have to have an operable window.
Right, we have nine of them, we have, you know, the controls.
So these all have, all the sleeping rooms in this plan have, um, have an operable window, yes.
But what about the den? That's what we're talking about now. Does a den, does a den require ventilation?
No. Not in, not under this scheme, no.
It's habitable space, but doesn't require ventilation?
It's not considered a separate sleeping room in this plan. Again, for local comfort, you can, you know, ask that they case the opening, change the size of the doorway, remove the closet, things like that. Um, but yeah, that puts a constraint on the property manager for how they market the units for having home office or other space that they're not using. Um, Dan, uh, give us some unit sizes for one-bedrooms compared to a one-bedroom with a den?
Uh, let's see, so one-bedroom with den are closer to eight-hundred square feet or more, and the one-bedrooms-
See, six-eighty-five.
Yeah, six-eighty-five, so, if you could, uh, six-eighty-five.
And so, the typical layout is a, a bedroom with a closet, and there's a living room with, um, is, is there a dining space, or is it like more of an eating kitchen?
In the one-bedrooms, or the one-
In the one-bedroom.
The one-bedroom has a kitchen, uh, table, living space, uh, coat closets, mechanical closets, laundry, a, uh, one bath, and, uh, one bedroom.
I mean, if you're trying to work from home, you know, the den is really best-
I know there are options, and you don't, you don't want people using the den as a bedroom, but a lot of people work from home now, and having a home office is a really nice thing to have, and if you're gonna have a home office, you need a door.
Yes.
And again, these are gonna be, you know, a managed property, it's not a mom-and-pop operation, I, I think there's a, you know, it's extensive.
It's composed, it's composed of the law.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Is there, is there a, a common co-working space in the building?
Uh, there's not.
There's not.
No.
So then, people will probably want to use that den as an office.
But none of them are affordable units, right? That creates a whole separate issue.
None of the affordables have dens?
No, they do not.
None of the affordable sections, we don't have to worry about that.
It's from a-
Pickup.
Okay, should we continue?
Okay, um, also on this floor, there is a, a courtyard space, and there is a trash room on each floor that would have a, a trash chute that goes down to the ground floor, trash collection room.
So the courtroom's on the second, is it the second floor?
The second floor, above the parking.
And anyone can access it in the building?
It's actually, yeah, the building occupants can access it.
Are you proposing any permanent fixtures out there, planters, turf?
Uh, we plan to have movable, movable furniture and planters, nothing fixed. Uh, just, just movable planters within that space. No, no fixed green space within the courtyard. These will be pedestal pavers over concrete slabs.
What's the access to the building, to the courtyard?
Access to the building?
And to the courtyard?
Oh, the courtyard, that happens, uh, at the two corners here, so you can see the little hand that's on the left side, and then there's a second access from the court, or from the corridor on the upper right.
Can I, can I ask? I'm just gonna make this suggestion, so for the units that have bedrooms that, um, open on the courtyard, um, to consider doing some sort of semi-permanent planter or, um, fixture that gives you that buffer between the window space and then the active part of the courtyard? Okay.
So on the, on the north edge of the courtyard, uh, across, right, where, where you, where you have the hand, that's just a solid wall?
No, there's windows, uh, from the courtyard to the corridor.
Oh, there are, okay.
There are.
So that will let's like a little light in?
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, I don't have to think anything else.
Getting close, you can see them here.
And I assume those are all operable windows that, along the courtyard, yes, at the second floor?
Along, uh, I, the, in the, in the corridor, these would be fixed.
No, but, no, the, the units-
From the units, they, they would be able to open their windows, correct?
They'll be able to open the windows?
Yes.
And they're transparent and the floors, they're, they're-
No, we're not treating the glass differently. Um, moving to the next floor. Uh, moving up through the building, uh, it's a very similar layout, we have a full ring of, uh, apartments, the building does step back about four feet, um, so there is a change in dimension here, but essentially the same layout as below. And again, on the fourth floor. As we move up to the fifth floor, the floor plan changes, we're not using the full footprint of the building, we're only having a U-shaped layout of apartments, um, a single-loaded corridor, and, uh, there is some mechanical units in the, the shaded zone here.
I'm sorry, how far does the fourth floor set back? Fourth floor sets back on the third?
The fourth floor sets back, I think it's eighteen feet. Yeah, eighteen foot four, from the floor below it, uh, along Langford.
So it just sets back, they don't get, do they get anything?
There, there's a, yeah, there's a terrace, each, each unit on the fifth floor has a private terrace.
No, on the fourth floor, so.
The fourth floor-
Fourth floor sets back eighteen feet.
No, fourth- Sorry, I'm sorry, if I, spoke, sorry. Uh, fourth floor sets back only four-
Four feet.
Four feet.
Four feet. And there are balconies on the, the units along Langford.
For the-
Fourth floor.
There's a couple of units on the Langford side that get balconies.
That get balconies, but that's it.
Correct. And then moving up to the fifth floor, that's where we have a much larger setback, step back in the building, uh, about eighteen feet on Langford, and fifteen feet, I believe, on Second and First. And that allows for private terraces for each of these units, and a common shared terrace at the, uh, the corner of Second and Langford.
Is, is that shared terrace just for the people on that floor?
That's for the whole building as well, correct. It's just a additional outdoor space for all the residents.
I'm sorry, would you see the machine right there?
At that corner here, uh, if you look at the screen, the little hand is-
And are there any permanent fixtures on that terrace? It looks like there's a rail or something.
Uh, I think we were showing some sort of a storage, but, um, again, it would be all movable furniture and planters.
And what are those sliders then, from the, to the common terrace? I don't see a door.
Yeah, yeah, we're showing sliders, but that, that should be a swing door for the common terrace. We can note that we'll, if that change.
And, and why is the screening on the, the mechanical equipment zone?
Uh, the screening that we have proposed is three foot six. And it's a, uh, painted metal aluminum louvered screen, so it allows airflow for the mechanical units. You can't see it, and, uh-
It's a less than property, it's also on the streets.
We did do a, a site study, um, and you wouldn't be able to see those units from the, from the street regardless.
You wouldn't even see the screen?
No.
Can you see it from the lofts across the street?
From the lofts across the street, it would be, uh, behind-
Behind the-
The, the units.
The, that level.
On this level, right? So if we go up a level, um, you'll see the roof. So this is the roof on top of the fifth floor units, and we'll also have mechanical equipment up there as well, and, uh, we're also providing the, the mechanical screening here, so that would all be screened.
And so are those, are those terraces that are, that are there?
Those are the, uh, just what you're seeing below, the roof area below.
Oh, so they are not on that floor?
No.
Okay.
So on the, on the fifth floor plan, I see there's fixed roof access ladder that goes up to the, the roof of the fifth floor. But I don't understand how you would get to that ladder.
You would get to the ladder from, from this, the main roof access happens here, on the upper roof, there's a, a roof access hatch.
I see, and so you're going down the ladder, not going up?
You would go down the ladder, right? So to the access to the lower portion, there's a, a roof ladder, permanent roof ladder here.
Understood, thank you.
What is the material for?
It's attached to the utility room?
It's, it's attached to the, the exterior wall. The roof hat, the interior roof hatch ladder, um, happens on the fifth floor. And that happens in the utility room. So there's a fixed ladder at the end of this utility room that goes up to the hatch above.
Did you have something, Jen?
Yeah, can you just explain the materials for the roof, but it has the sustainable calculations? It says maybe green roof, blue roof, or solar, a combination?
So the, the main roof material would be a white TPO roof, and then, um, we're asking to have the, uh, flexibility to determine, uh, what's best for the project as far as a, a solar photovoltaic system or a vegetated green roof. Either way, we'll comply with the, the percentage that's required.
You're saying fifty percent, I mean, to me, the requirement of, so the rest is gonna be white, the other fifty percent?
The other fifty percent will either be solar or green roof. Okay, um, just quickly go through the elevations here, um. The building materials that we're proposing are a, a mix of, uh, thin brick veneer and fiber cement siding, and, uh, lap siding and panel material with, uh, with trim. So we have, uh, let's see, there's a gray brick color, tan brick color, and they each have soldier coarse accents around windows, and have floor levels, uh, black painted aluminum railings. In the, uh, the garage openings, we're proposing an ornamental fence, uh, material. Now, these are pretty large window openings to, uh-
Do they do one?
Elevated look, uh, I believe a mix of casements and double, double hongs. Or the, uh, sorry, these are the sliders here that you see coming out, and these are Juliet balconies along First and Second Ave. So they're actually, they're not like a balcony you can step out to, but you can open your slider and have, uh, you know, ventilation.
And those six, so the six panel windows are what, casements?
No, these here are sliders, these are double, these are double hongs.
Those are double hongs, okay.
These are sliders.
This, well, in the third section, why is the lock?
Oh, these are casements, sorry, these are casements here.
So they just open-
They open, yeah, outlet doors.
And that, that's facing, um-
First, this is first.
I'd be likely want to ask a question about the garage door, now that we've established up the will-be garage door, it does beg the question of what will the garage door look like? And I, I don't know if you can really answer that now, since, you know, you've just proposed it, but the board in the past has had, uh, thoughts and feelings about garage doors.
Are there any requirements as to do with the garage door, that's what we-
No.
It would likely be a coiling door, um, just so that would, you know, when you need a high-speed operation, you don't want to wait for a sectional door to-
Yeah, metal mesh, metal rod, metal-
So a high-speed, um, coiling door. Metal, right.
Dan, since the whole back of the building is open on the ground floor, do you actually need those openings to be so large? I mean, you're doing natural ventilation for the, for the garage.
Natural ventilation for the garage.
But the whole back side of the building is open?
The whole back is open, I know there is a requirement for certain number of, um-
You need to do the, the murals, the whatever, public art, but-
We can, we can look at the calculation and see if there's a, a way to, to reduce some of those areas if it's a concern, but-
Yeah, I'm with Donna here, if there's any way, especially on the First and Second Avenue frontages, to make the ground floor openings more, more consistent with what's above.
Presume whatever going on. Yeah, if we can get them, size and shape-wise, a little bit more to mimic the-
What's above.
The windows above. And even if we can close some of them up, I, I, I mean, it's a balance between, I hate having a blank solid wall, but also, mm.
Right, but you could also put, if, even if you close it, you could still put art on it, to make it interesting.
Right, you know?
Decorative-
But I think that that would be something that we should-
Decorative metal panel like dent too.
Like we're having them do at VFW.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in the camp, I mean, I cannot stand, when it's all closed in on the first floor, I think, I think it's the worst option. I would rather have open, unless it's something really-
I mean, you know, I'm not saying every one, but it just seems like-
Well, and it's what we did at twelve oh one, there's the mesh over the opening, artistic mesh. Well, this is what we did at 1201, there's the mesh over the opening, artistic mesh.
Again, also, just the size and shape of them. Again, now that the door opening is going to have a door.
Certainly to make them align with the window openings above. I don't think that would be a problem.
Something, something like that.
Make it look more like part of the building.
Yeah, and also have a grill work that would mimic the emulsion pattern of the windows.
And so the light color is what, those are bascentary panels, what are they?
Fiber cement panel, like a hardy, smooth hardy panel.
It's going to be collateral, it's going to be big panels?
I have, I have some rendering, so you can see, get a better sense of what that would look like. In fact, I can skip to those now. This is an image looking at.
This is on the package.
This is not, I'm sorry, this is, this is new. A five.
Who would like to introduce it?
These are architectural renderings, I have seven sheets here.
Prepared by?
Mode Architects.
And number of sheets, you said seven?
Yes.
And date?
The date on these stated 5/27/25.
All right, so why don't you describe what we're looking at?
Okay, so this is a view at the, the corner of Second and Langford. And you're seeing the building and how it steps. If you see where the little cursor is hovering, you see where the building steps four feet at the first floor, there's a balcony, and then it steps another four feet at the third floor. And then again, at the, the fifth floor, it steps back 18 feet. The materials.
Do you know what that section, the, those balconies, that's on Langford, yes?
Langford, yeah, the balconies happen only on Langford Street. So there's a stepping and then also a projecting balcony happening on the upper, on the fourth So there's a mix here of a, of a dark, thin brick veneer and a tan, thin brick veneer. And then the white panels are fiber cement with, with trim boards. And then the gray is a fiber cement with kind of a.
So that tennis up the corner with the person standing there, on the second floor?
This one here is on the second floor.
That's a unit.
That's a unit, correct. And this is the, the parking entry, right? We talked about, we talked about getting rid of, we talked about getting rid of this walkway. Or actually, I'm sorry, that's on First Avenue, we'll, we'll see that one. So this is actually access to the bike room. This is the bike room here.
Again, these windows we see here going up the right side on Second Avenue, are any of those in the stairwell?
These are in the elevator lobby.
So no, no windows in the stairwell that are going to be illuminated, right, all night?
Those are in the hallway. So they, those will be illuminated all the time, will be illuminated all the time.
Right, but they're in the hallway, so they're not exposed to the.
It's in the, yeah, the elevator lobby, it's not in the stair directly now.
But that is an illuminated common.
It is, it is a common corridor and we do intend to follow the intent of the Energy Star requirements, which would require that the common spaces all have occupancy sensors and controls. So these, these spaces would be dimmed when there's no occupants.
But I, I don't think that I caught, or if I understood, that the stairwell, as it's going up, are the windows on the street or are the windows?
There are no windows in the stairwell.
There are no windows in the stairwell.
There's no windows in these, in this stair here, there is, the window that we were looking at happens on the elevator lobby.
What about the other stairwell?
The other stairwell's internal, there's no windows. This is more of a straight-on shot of the Second Ave elevation showing the main entry.
Was it a walkie?
There's a canopy with a, with a address sign. And this leads into the lobby.
Is that, is that, what is that, canvas or is that a?
It's an aluminum, aluminum canopy or aluminum awning. This is a view of the elevation along Langford, and this is highlighting some of the public art spaces. So there will be some areas dedicated for public art that will work with the city to determine what those uses would be. And this is the First Ave elevation. And this, this walkway that I'm hovering over here is the one that we talked about getting rid of, extending this rain garden to the corner.
And someone's going to speak about what's in the rain garden, correct? Plantings in the rain garden?
Right, we have a landscape.
Most specifically would be asking about the tree in a rain garden. Okay, go ahead.
It's a clipper.
This is a view along First Avenue looking at the west side, west corner of the building. You see how the building turns and the same materials are on the west elevation as along all the other facades in the building. And then we're, we're showing green here, but this is, you know, possibly a mix of green and solar or solar. We're not prepared at this time to determine what that mix would be, but.
We will comply.
We will comply with the sustainable roof requirement. A view along the west elevation from above.
I'm sorry, did we see the Second Avenue side or did I miss that? You showed the Second Avenue that the lofts will be looking at?
This elevation.
That's going to be for the lofts to see, okay.
So some of the sustainable features of the building, you know, we're going to target an Energy Star equivalency of 75 points. It would be all Energy Star certified appliances. You know, increased insulation and air leakage requirements that go along with the Energy Star requirements. Efficient windows and glazing, efficient HVAC equipment and water heating, all LED lighting with occupancy controls in the common areas. Efficient plumbing fixtures, water sense labeled. And we've already spoke about the rain gardens and the sustainable roof requirement.
Dan, do you have anything more?
That is all.
And just in conclusion, with regard to your testimony, in terms of design, height, number of stories, architectural features, in your opinion, are we complying with the requirements of the 1001 First Avenue Redevelopment Plan?
Yes, I believe.
Are you aware of any, from an architectural standpoint, any design waivers or exceptions that we're proposing?
No.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have no further questions for the witness at this time.
And I have to bring it up again, is someone else, someone else going to talk about parking?
Yes.
Some different person?
Yes.
Okay.
Is someone else going to talk about affordable housing?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Okay.
Is that going to go to the discretion?
Any questions from any other board members for this witness? Any questions from our professionals where their questions have not been answered that are in their reports? No? Okay, anyone from the public that would like to question the witness?
Once again, your name and address for the witness.
Claire Higgins, 1001 Second Avenue.
Thank you.
What is the mailing address of this building? Asking because the sign on Second Avenue says 1001 First.
That's something that'll be determined by the postal, post office, it's not part of his testimony.
Oh, that's just like a.
It's just for the rendering.
Okay. All right, then that's all for this witness. Can we take five minutes?
Thank you.
Motion to take a break.
Just a second. All in favor?
Aye. Five minutes. I'm serious. We got to get through this.
Okay, I will now take roll call. Everyone? Bueller? No. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Still here.
Jen Sauter.
Here.
Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Bob Zuckerman.
Here.
Kathy McLaughlin. Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Here.
And we're back.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Just, we have until about 20 of, 20 of 10 have, use it as you wish.
I, we will proceed with due speed. Brian Lef, I'd like you to have it sworn in, please.
I do. Brian Lef, L-E-F-F.
And just for the record, your testimony tonight and your capacity as?
Landscape architect.
And your licenses are current and up to date and in good standing as we speak?
Yes, they are.
Madam Chair, is that acceptable?
Absolutely.
All right, and why don't you, we're under a timing sensitivity, so discuss the proposal and with respect to our chair, would you please make sure you do discuss the plantings in the rain garden?
Absolutely. Real quick, the landscape design for this project was designed to complement the architecture and to provide year-round interest on this property. The plant selections are mostly native, but there are a few introduced species for visual interest. The plan does include several rain gardens, which were engineered to enhance the site's stormwater management in an ecologically friendly way. Now, the rain gardens will be planted with a variety of plants that are suited to periodic flooding. Some of them that are prominent here will be the purple cone flower and the tree that's shown on the plan is a Royal Star Magnolia, which is a wet site tolerant, small tree or a large shrub, depending on who you talk to and how it's pruned. Generally gets to be about seven to eight feet tall, white flowers. Because its name is magnolia, it's often considered a small tree rather than a large shrub. There was a landscape plan submitted.
It's in the, it's in the. Sheet six, I think?
Sheet six?
In the civil, in the civil set.
So in addition to the, the plants that will be physically planted, the perennials, the Royal Star Magnolia, the rain gardens are also seeded with a wet site tolerant seed mix. It's actually called a native rain garden flowering seed mix. The description's pretty good. It's made just for rain gardens in those specific conditions. And it contains a lot of flowering material that's going to provide that seasonal interest. The maintenance is fairly light on that type of a seeding where it gets mowed once a year. Everything gets collected, it reseeds itself in some cases, the perennials just come back. But yes, I agree, it does need to be maintained.
Is it, is it flat or is it swelled?
There, it's a flat bottom. There's side walls, I believe in this case that range from 18 inches to maybe two feet deep. It's not meant to be a deep detention basin. In fact, I think it's meant to drain within 24 or 48 hours completely, even after it's But the bottom of them will be flat, and that's where most of the plantings will be.
So underneath it for drainage, like.
The bottom, the bottom is generally a sand bottom, very well drained. It's meant to infiltrate as much as possible. And with the sand that you have in Asbury Park, I'm yet to see a site where that's an issue. Everything just drains down. Anything, if you get a very heavy rainfall where it's going to overtop, there are overflow basins that the engineer had already discussed how that whole system works.
Yeah, so do the rain gardens drain into that system?
Yes, they do.
Oh, they are connected?
Yes.
So do you just use the natural materials that are there or are you digging out?
They're probably going to dig out and replace with a specified, a sand type of the soil that has enough nutrients to support the plant growth, but also has a very high sand content that encourages the infiltration. Okay, as, as the tract about existing residential uses, the appropriate landscape buffers are provided. It does, the buffers that are provided comply both in the width of the buffers and the material provided. The, you've heard about the fence that's provided along the westerly property line, along all of the residential boundaries. There would also be evergreen plantings on our side of that fence comprised of either arborvitae's or Leyland cypress, depending on where the, where you have the room for the Leyland cypress. Where it narrows down, you would have the arborvitae's installed at a height of, I believe, seven to eight feet, which puts them higher than the fence at the time of planting. So that little gap that's over the fence and under the, the garage roof, within three to five years, that entire space would be covered and you wouldn't even see that gap.
Then on the, the illustration here, this, you know, where the bench saw for the ground floor, they show like there's vegetation.
There's vegetation all around the building.
No, no, I understand that, but it seems like, I don't know, are those planted planters in the screened area there?
Oh, there's no planters in this grave, everything would be planted at grade on the outside of the building.
So the illustration, yeah, so correct, it's showing like. Plantings in that screening area. Am I mistaken?
Yes, that's, that's artistic embellishment. Like a, it looks like a, a window box.
Okay, no, there is no, there are no planters or anything, everything would be planted at grade, pitched away from the building, obviously, for drainage, but also not blocking the ventilation for the building and the garage. So street trees were briefly, briefly discussed. The current plan is to leave the trees that are on First Avenue. There are four of them there that are in decent condition. As your planner has pointed out, they've been pruned kind of weirdly over the years as many trees have been. JCP&L loves to do that.
There's one I saw at the corner, though, but I mean, it's from the one picture two years ago, the one that looks like it's all covered with ivy and stuff, that large tree at the corner.
I'm not, not familiar with that specific tree to speak to that specific one.
Because usually that's not in good condition, I mean, that's ivy.
Not necessarily bad. Ivy doesn't, it gets a bad rap sometimes, but it's not, it could, could choke the tree, but without seeing, I can't say whether it is or it's not. But we did originally propose a tree called a September Golden Rain Tree for Langford and Second Avenue. There was some question as to the appropriateness of that tree, and I have no problems changing that to a tree. I know Monmouth County actually has a list of shade, recommended street trees. The Golden Rain Tree was on that list at one point, but when I checked it before this hearing, it has been removed. So we will replace that with a more appropriate tree. And I would recommend using one from the Monmouth County Shade Tree List. At this location, you're a little bit further away from the ocean than a lot of the other projects I've worked on in Asbury Park. And I'm not sure that the salt tolerance on that side of the tracks is quite an issue. So I think we have a larger selection of trees that we can pull from. And that really sums up what we're proposing for the landscape, unless there are any.
And I guess just from a, a conclusionary standpoint, are you aware of any design exceptions or deviations that we're applying for in connection with the 1001 First Avenue Redevelopment Plan?
No, my understanding is that this is fully compliant.
Thank you.
Does any, any planning board members have any questions of this witness?
I would say that I'm very, very happy to see the rain gardens and the plan list for the rain gardens. I think it'll be beautiful.
Thank you.
Any other question or statements for this witness from our professionals?
Does anybody have any preferences about the street trees?
Well, I saw your comment about the height, I think that we could just because of the, the lines, but.
Do you want?
I think it could be left up to discussion between.
Any questions, um, anything else from the professionals? No? Any questions from the public for this witness? No? Okay.
All right. Fair enough.
Good evening. Yes, I do. Sure, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N.
And Mr. Dean, your testifying tonight in your capacity as?
A traffic engineer, consulting traffic engineer. And just by way of be brief background, I've appeared before this board previously for the, I think it was called Jamel, uh, the Armory VFW side. I've also been involved with 1201 Memorial, although I guess you didn't need me for that, but, um, and I maintain an office in Ocean Grove, uh, and I represent, uh, private developers as well as municipalities throughout the state, and I'm a licensed professional engineer.
And your licenses and certifications and qualifications are current and up to date and in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. All right, uh, why don't we just sort of, from a, a parking, uh, standpoint and traffic standpoint, uh, address the situation and you've heard, you've been, you've been here tonight and you've heard some of the questions regarding parking, so I'm sure you have some answers.
I do, I hope, hopefully I do, and they're the right questions, uh, that I'm addressing. Just by way of be brief background, I submitted an October 14th, 2024 traffic study as part of the application and it sets forth a lot of the numbers. We did traffic counts during the summer on Langford, on First and Second. I would characterize all of the streets surrounding the site as, as fairly low activity. And I contrast that with obviously Memorial, Main and some of, some of the busier streets in the city. As part of those traffic counts, we also looked at pedestrian movements along each of the sidewalks abutting the site as well as bicycles. So we wanted to capture, you know, in August terms, how much activity is, is at these two specific corners. Because of the proximity to the train station, I would say the nature of the site and the intentionally suppressed parking supply, overall traffic will be essentially managed, uh, contrasted with if you had, say, two or three spaces per unit, more parking means more cars. So by intentionally keeping your parking supply appropriately sized, it does help suppress traffic. We would expect, uh, many of the residents to be pedestrian oriented, use the bikes as well as mass transit. After much consideration, um, obviously the only point of ingress and egress is to first, we have a convention, a conventional 24-foot wide two-way driveway. Um, what I do want to address is the, I'll say, recommendation, I think principally by your planner, to have audio and visual warning signs. In 99.9% of the cases, I would agree. And most buildings, I would say that are higher density, those buildings have a zero-foot setback to the right-of-way line and the sidewalk. Think Jersey City, Hoboken, New York City, and I hate to point it out, but even the Bangs Avenue Garage, that building sits right up on the sidewalk. This building, by contrast, from the sidewalk to the front of the building is roughly 37 feet. And to put that in the context, that's from that wall to that light. Two car lengths away. That is plenty of visibility for a car exiting that driveway to not only see the pedestrians, but for the pedestrians to see the car. While the applicant has agreed to it, my concern is candidly, noise and light pollution. Every time a car comes in and out, that thing will flash and it'll beep. I don't know that that's necessary, that kind of intrusion, given the sensitivity of the receptors to our west. If you want it, you've heard the applicant will do it. I would urge you to consider whether, given this distance, it's necessary. There will be clear lines of sight, subject to Mr. Leff's landscaping plan, to ensure that there are clear sightlines. But, and then the last thing to point out is, and it's not particularly visible on the plan, we have a stop bar and a stop sign right at the sidewalk. So every vehicle exiting, and bear in mind, two-vehicle lengths, stop at that stop sign and yield to the pedestrians on the sidewalk. That's the reason I don't think you need literally the bells and whistles for this type of design. Uh, in terms of parking, you've heard there are 127 parking spaces.
Okay.
There are 127 parking spaces. I know there was a resident that had a concern about EV spaces. None of us in this room can do anything about EV. They're state mandated. We have to have 19 EV spaces by code. They're like handicap parking spaces. So those 19 spaces are principally facing Langford and then there's two up in the northeast corner, essentially pointing towards Second. There's a rollout at the first CO, 5% of our total parking or four of those EV spaces have, excuse me, be five spaces have to be put in. Three years hence, the next 5% need to be energized and then three years thereafter, the remainder. So initially, when this building is tenanted, there will only be, I think it's five, maybe it's six, but it'll, it'll be the minimum number of EV spaces. The rest are called make-ready. As you've heard from Mr. Cleland, they have to have the, the wiring put in, but they won't have the pedestal and the, and the charge wire. So they'll just be regular parking spaces. The whole intent of that legislation is, as EV adoption continues to ideally roll out, more and more people throughout New Jersey will have EVs instead of internal combustion and there will be the demand over the next, say, eight years. Two years to build this and then the two, three-year periods to implement. So it, it is an intent to kind of future-proof the infrastructure for EV adoption. And the only way people will buy more EVs if they know their building has the spaces. So, um, that's why we have so many, uh, to answer that question. We do have a number of compact spaces as the redevelopment plan permits. And again, for clarification, all parking within the building comes in and out via First and the driveway. It is not accessible to any other street. Um, the intent is that none of the spaces will be assigned. They will, each tenant at, uh, leasing will be advised, you, you get one parking space. To the extent they have more vehicles, um, there is a 20% buffer above and beyond. We have a ratio of 1.2 in this building in accordance with the redevelopment plan. So that will, those, I'll say, additional tenant spaces will be leased on a first-come, first-served basis.
So it will be included in the rent?
It isn't.
The person will not be, if they say, I don't have a car, their rent does not go with that?
That is correct, correct. And, and part of the reason for that is, as, as you may surmise, in other more developed areas where there is a charge for parking, a, a lot of creative individuals say, you know, I'll save a hundred bucks a month and I'll just go park somewhere to the west on street. So to curtail that potential, it's included in the rent whether you have a vehicle or not.
But, but if a tenant gets a second spot, if there are a few, like you said, there's a buffer, um, they will pay for that extra?
That I can't answer. I don't believe that's the case at all. And again, just for the same reason, but everything is controlled by leasing. So, um, and, and again, it's, I, I always say, it's eyes wide open. If you're a prospective tenant and, and let's say in your circumstance, you may have three cars and you're told by the leasing office, we only can give you one space, this isn't the building for you.
The ones that are EV, that do have the charges, is, is there any more? Can, I mean, I know, is it up to management? It's, can you park a non-EV car in an EV space? Is there really more against?
Not in New Jersey just yet. So, and again, at, at, for, for at least the first three years of leasing, the, the overwhelming majority of spaces will, will be non-EV. You know, there'll, there'll be, I think it's six EV at, at the first CO. And that's a fairly small number, you know, as we're seeing more manufacturers.
And I assume what, that's gonna be for official charge or company ones?
Yeah, how does the charging?
Those, those are administered privately and, and it's, uh, think of a gas dispenser with a hose on either side. And that's candidly why the architectural plans, I just learned this, have an even number of EV spaces because one pedestal winds up, I'll, I'll describe it as on the stripe in between the spaces, so that there's a charge cable to the left and a charge cable to the right. So under the site plan where we only have 19, this last space at the very southeast would, would have the charging pedestal, you know, in line with the columns, let's say, but yet there would be a, I'll call it a hose, a, a cable on the south side to the non-EV space.
But, um, the provider, so, um, like, I get that you may not know. Would it be ChargePoint or one of those services, um, that's going to, um, provide, again, the, the electric charging service?
That is correct. In, in, in other words, it would be.
It's not, they're not.
It would be unfair to the other tenants if the tenants with electric vehicles get free charging, whereas everybody else with a gas car has to go pay for gas. So whether it's ChargePoint, EV Go, or whoever the, the vendor is, there will be a subscription service to use that.
Okay. So, and then to the point about people's concern about whether you have an EV parked in it or a non-EV parked in an EV space. Oftentimes, the provider, um, has a provision that if you're not charging an EV car in an EV space, you'll get a fine.
Only if you're plugged in. In a private lot, you would just park in the space.
So again, it depends on the provider. So again, however building management's gonna manage these spaces, who's providing the service? If it's ChargePoint or not, you know, one of the other companies, it, it's, it's a variable.
So you mean if you're, if you have an EV and you're parking in an EV space?
And you're not charging?
You might be paying for the charger.
If you're not charging, you could get a penalty, yes.
Even if you have an EV?
You are supposed to be charging now.
You're supposed to be charging.
You know, if you're.
Give you that spot for charging purposes.
Otherwise, they have no idea you're parking.
If you're charging ends at 2:00 AM.
They know because there's an app that says whether you're charging.
Right, of course.
They don't know you're parked there. If I park there in my gas car, they don't, I don't have an app. They don't know. But I.
You'll park on Madison all the time.
But I do have a, I do have an electric car.
Again, some of them, some of them are better than others.
If I charge up and they don't leave within two hours.
Some of them have little cameras to see that you're in their spot.
In, in private garages, it, it, and candidly, if there's a demand for more charging equipment, whereas the, the prospective tenants are asking for it, the building owner has all the incentive to, to provide more to accommodate that demand. So it, it's, it's in its nascent stages, you know, we're, we're trying to sort it out. And as was testified to, with 19 EV spaces, um, credits are allowed to incentivize this installation and the legislation says up to 10% of the total parking supply, in this case, 12.7 to 13, you get a credit. So we're not using that credit. We have 127 fixed spaces. I know also, um, there was a, a question regarding the rental spaces. Um, my understanding from the applicant is that's a carryover from the 2018 redevelopment plan. Um, so to be consistent with those rental spaces, they are incorporated in the plan. Since the pandemic, people figured out Uber and Lyft and the like. And there's also now a number of car, I'll say rental, short-term rental services, Turo, Kite, even Enterprise will deliver to your building. So the, the Zip Cars and the Hertz to Go aren't quite as robust as they were in 2018. So I would, I would call these four rental car spaces, but if the demand isn't there, why, why should we just lose the use of those four spaces? So, um, i- if that, to, to your satisfaction, can remain fluid toward the parking management, um, you know, we could, we could use two of them, for example, upfront. If no one's ever renting them, what, what's the point?
As long as, it will only be residents parking.
A hundred percent.
Right, correct.
Without being renting elsewhere.
Yeah, I, I, I would think that having, mandating that there's four rental spaces would kind of be a waste. Zip Car is a thing, like you said, a decade ago and, and, and longer. I, I don't know who uses Zip Car anymore.
But since the redevelopment, it's required. So we're debating, right, this, what, what you testified to is that this is required by the plan.
Well, we could give them an exception.
We could give them, okay.
Correct. So, again, we could, you know, we're trying to predict what happens in the future. I, I, I think there's a sentiment that the, what was the thought seven years ago of, of Zip Car and the like has now been eclipsed by Uber and Lyft and, and, and other services that are more on-demand instead of occupying four spaces.
Uber, they're just picking you up on the street. They're not picking you up in the garage.
Correct, they pick you up on the street, correct.
My personal opinion would be you say these are, you know, op, rental car spaces optional. So if you want to have them, you can have them, but you're not required to have them. That would be my personal.
Well, they, they would have to partner with those companies that have those cars there and they have to fund that. Cause they don't just, you can't just bring a car anywhere you want.
No, right, my point is, is I, I think we should say, if they want to do that, we'll allow it. But if they don't want to do it.
It's part of the, it's part of the development plan and it says that they have to have it. So way to set up is fine, the way Gary's saying is fine. If, they're, they're most likely not gonna get used to this service because it, it's not as robust as it used to be. It costs more money. I tried to set it up here, I know. Uh, it'll probably just end up being normal parking spaces that they could give to residents, which is ultimately fine. Cause having these inside the building is kind of pointless anyway, cause you're limiting, there are people who can use the car. You'd want them on the street instead of the building anyway.
Right, so other people can use the car.
Yeah, so.
And that's the bigger issue, is you're inviting the public into the building.
Yeah, well, I don't.
Say again?
When we had like, the other rental spaces, who was not?
I believe those are sanitary cleanouts. They're labeled CO on the site plan, so there, there must be a sewer lateral or pipe somewhere in there just to maintain that system. There's, there's also some, I, I, I'll defer to Mr. Cleland, but you know, there's some in the driveway itself, so they have to be secured and structurally, you know, uh, they can withstand the vehicle loads. But wherever you see those periodically on the site plan, there's a legend over to the left and they're depicted as cleanouts. Um, and trying to be mindful of the chair's direction, that's all I have in the way of direct, unless I didn't.
Just in conclusion, if I could just say, any, uh, with the exception of the car share, uh, space that we just talked about, are there any exceptions or waivers that we're requesting?
Not, not that, not that I'm aware of. There is one other issue and I neglected to mention. You'll see on the aerial, there are two cars because it's a overlay of the site plan on an aerial. As you heard from Mr. Cleland, um, two spaces will be lost to accommodate on-street parking and there was a question about site triangles. That is forever the challenge with on-street parking. And if you look to our neighbor, immediately to the west in their driveway, they have cars right up alongside the driveway and that is the consequence of on-street parking. Could, with Mr. Benano's input, could, could we stripe a gore area and a flare for better sightlines? Yes, but then you lose on-street parking. So it's a balance of, uh, you know, do you want the parking on-street or do you want to remove some for safety? I, I look at the, the characteristics of the balance of the street and, you know, if there's a gap in between driveways, people fill it. So other than additional yellow striping, we, we are just consistent with that pattern along the first.
But you have the aprons that go out anyway that you show on there.
Correct. There, there is a slight flare. Um, I, I have it at my driveway at my office. It's a nuisance, but the whole concept of on-street parking is, you know, you should be able to see through the windows and peek around. The good news is the traffic on, on, uh, First, again, is very light. We quantified it in our study, I think it's 50 vehicles an hour. So one car a minute, it's not a lot. And, and same with the pedestrian traffic, that was even lighter. There was six people, up to a maximum of six an hour on the sidewalk. So it's not, it's not like what you have in town with a lot of pedestrian activity. It's, it's comparatively very light. So that, again, that's all I have in the way of direct. And, and again, with, with the discussion, uh, it is my professional opinion that safe and efficient ingress and egress will be provided, um, with the discussions that we've had relative to maintaining that visibility at our apron for pedestrian, um, foot traffic. And thank you for your time tonight.
Any questions from anyone on the board?
More statement, uh, just because I know, again, the compact vehicles, they're, you know, allowed to have so many by the development plan, so they're within their right to do that. Uh, my concern is more that since they aren't managing who goes to what space, it's not gonna be long before everyone's SUV or pickup truck is parked over two compact spaces because it's the only space they could find. Cause the majority of people in this country own SUVs at the smallest and big trucks the largest. So that many compact spaces, I don't think they're gonna be used for compact cars. I think they're gonna end up being. They're going to end up being one car in two spaces. Because I think they said it's seven and a half feet wide, which is about okay, but I think they're nine or 10 feet long. They're, they're small.
It, the, a Ford Explorer is about 16 feet long, and I think these are 15s.
15?
So, you know, if, if an Explorer tries to fit in, I think they'll have a harder time getting out than, than the depth of the space. Um, I think, again, because of the management structure, what vehicle do you have? You have a Honda Accord, you go in compact. If you have, you know, a Camry, compact, but if you have an Explorer, full-size.
If they were managing who went to what space, I would agree, but they're not. That's my, that was my take to the comment.
No, that's a fair observation, and it's, it's a, it, it's a challenge. I, I can't disagree. The, the good news is we expect the turnover, unlike, say, a shopping center where you have a lot of in-and-out traffic, and you try to do compact in those, complete disaster.
And then, and just, uh, because you brought it up, the, uh, the warning system, do people have feelings about that?
I'll say, uh, because of the reasons Gary mentioned, I have no strong feelings for or against it. It's better to have than not need it, than need it and not have it. So whatever the board feels, I'm fine with. But yeah, there is plenty of rooms, uh, for them to come out, stop, see you around. But it's best to always have some, some kind of occasion.
Yeah, I mean, that long driveway is just a running start, in my opinion.
It's very true also.
Um, do we know who's across the street from it?
I think it's a Chrome shop.
It, it's, yeah, it's, it's a manufacturing, I think you're right, it's, I forget the name, but it's a, a plating or a, or a chrome manufacturing building.
So it's not a residence that- It's not, it's not a residence.
Definitely not a residence.
I think we moved it from Second Avenue to First for that reason.
Well, what do-
And partner engineering is on the corner.
I prefer to have it.
Well, the park, yeah.
Prefer to have it?
Nobody.
Do we have people that prefer to have it? Want to just-
I'm fine either way.
I'm fine either way also. If we have some preferences of people to have, and, and I think a lot of us are fine either way, then go for it.
I, I would actually rather have the sidewalk look a little different. I feel like that's more of a setup.
That, I think, is an exceptional idea. It, we just have to be careful for ADA because usually those detectable warning surfaces, if there's a visually impaired pedestrian, they hit those bumps and so they know it's something. And if the, if the texture of that driveway apron, um, is either a different color or is a, you know, a stamped concrete to give it some relief and visual cue, I, I think that's a great way to address it. But again, there is a stop sign right there at the sidewalk. Um, and it, and again, if, if this were a shallower setback with the building, I, I could not agree more, but two, I can fit two car lengths from the building to that stop bar before the, the crosswalk.
What's the stop wall?
It's where, it's the white painted thing where you stop when the sign is right next to it. It's painted on the, on the asphalt. Yeah, it's a white, 12-inch, 24-inch white stripe. It tells you in theory where to stop your car. It's a pavement, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, I just feel like there's so many, I mean, we have obviously the condition all over the city, but it's so, it can be so dangerous and there's, um, even though I know it's a low count of pedestrians now, it'll be different in the future, you know, it might be different, we don't know. There'll be more activity because of this building, and I just feel like the more warnings you can have, because kids, like, kids are biking and all that on the sidewalk and-
And with the scooters, because there's, even by the lofts, there's, there're scooter stops. There's like all these scooters that are sitting there. I, I don't know. All right, can we get some idea from the, just a discussion from the board? I mean, does anybody feel strongly that they do want the, um, visual and audio?
Yes.
One, two, three. Everybody else is, can go either way, or does anyone else feel that they say absolutely not?
You know, we have a professional that comes in and tells us that it's not needed, and he gives a pretty good explanation as to why it's not needed. Uh, why should we impose that upon the developer? You know, it's just an added expense that is apparently not necessary.
I, I'm, and, and I appreciate that. My concern is more for the, the receptors. That they, they are, they make an audio sound for a reason, and that's so because, you know, as people walk down the street, and this, you know, they're all doing this instead of watching where they're going. So you have that beeper. Someone leaves at 10 o'clock at night and it's quiet, it's going to be heard in the neighborhood. And so I just, I, I give you that caution out of sensitivity to the receptors, not, not, and I wouldn't advocate it if the building were zero-foot setback, but we're, like I said, 25 feet plus, we have 12 from the right-of-way line to the sidewalk. That curtain, that curtain, and I did it by ceiling ties, to here. That's how far away the building is to the sidewalk. So I'm standing on the sidewalk, that curtain is the building. That's why I don't think we need them, but we're, we're deferred to it.
We have three people that are saying that they do want them, and one that says they don't, and the rest can go either way. So I'm happy to take a straw.
Yeah, let's take a straw.
Let's take, let's take a vote. Because, um, and, and can one of the choices be, it doesn't, I don't feel strongly one way or another?
Well, if you don't feel strongly, that's like a abstention.
Okay.
So we should vote one way or the other.
Okay, so it's a yes or a no?
Yeah, but let's, yeah.
Okay. All right, can we do that?
Yes.
All right, just go through that.
Everybody knows the issue, right?
Yep. Can I just make, can I make one more pitch?
Sure, go ahead.
It's just that I understand, I appreciate what you're saying. I, my concern on this, I appreciate you're, um, being sensitive to the neighbors. But it, and it is, this is a lot of, um, you know, they seem extraneous, but there's a lot of noise. And we're not like in a pristine, silent community. It's, you know, there's noise, there's other noises. Uh, I think people are pretty used to there being some noises in their, in our neighborhoods here. Um, and I think if, if the developer is willing to do it, and it can add a bit more safety, I think it's really important they get to do it.
And also that the traffic, the volume of traffic that other people have mentioned, is increasing. There are bicycles, there's, there's scooters, there's electric bicycles.
We're also bringing in a whole new community with this building, so there will be new people.
Okay. All right. Can you go down the line?
Yes, I agree, yes, yes.
Jeremy?
I'm staying.
Excuse me.
Yvonne?
Oh, no.
No.
I abstain.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
We only have nine votes. So the, not, the no's have, yeah, we can't have 10 votes, only nine members are out.
Well, what if-
Who's, who's, who's the person that's not out?
Bob is alternate one, and Kathy's alternate two.
So then Catherine would not be out. So who voted yes? Raise your hands, please. One, two, three.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
If, if the people that abstained, are they a no or are they an abstain?
A no is no different than an abstain.
Then an abstain.
An abstain is no different than a no to be on a motion. Because you still need a majority.
Right, and the majority would be a five.
It's not a yes, so it's-
Right, a majority would be a five.
Majority, majority of nine, of nine members is five.
I would say yes, but that only brings us to four.
I would say yes.
Okay, so we're at five.
Close this discussion.
So now we have five in front of the motion?
We do.
Let's see your hands. Show your hands.
Just making it comfortable.
Five out of nine is a yes. You're putting in the system.
Okay. All right, any, uh, oh, I'm sorry, any questions, uh, from the public about, from this witness? No? Okay.
Thank you again. I'm sure that's the end of my witnesses. I have a 23-second conclusion when you're ready, summation.
Excellent. That's great. 23 seconds, we like that.
I have questions about affordable housing.
Oh, oh, excuse me. So, this does not include much 23 seconds. Um, so we have, uh, um, I was mistaken, I mean, I don't know that we have anyone to testify about it. We have Luke to answer questions. We're going to comply with the affordable housing requirements. We have absolutely no problem with that. We welcome that.
So the thing I say in my report about distribution, you're going to comply?
Well, we'll comply with the, the city's requirements as a, as a condition of approval.
Excellent.
Okay.
So my 23 seconds are, I thank you very much for giving us the time and your attention and your commitment, your expertise, your guidance, your insight, your suggestions, your ideas. They were great ideas. I think my last witness said some of the ideas were spectacular. So, um, many of which were accepted. I appreciate the, the good faith discussion we had with regard to the audio and visual. Uh, we are a compliant, um, proposal with the, with the condition that we are correcting that lighting situation. We have an management company that will professionally-
We have a nine-exception. We're requesting the flexibility from the-
Ride share.
For the, uh, ride share spaces. So that would be a nine-exception.
And, uh, we are respectfully requesting your support and approval tonight. And on behalf of my entire team, I thank you.
Uh, they're going to modify the, uh, openings in the garage to be more architecturally compatible.
Yes, that's something that is, the question is, is that, is that something that can be brought back?
Adjust the lighting in the garage so it's not, uh, light source is not visible.
Oh, those, those are things that I would like to see. I would like to see what the garage openings are going to look like now. Because we're asking for them to be on First and Second Avenue.
And the garage door?
And the garage door.
And the garage door. Garage door.
One of the two things I had that are not really concrete conditions, they're, you need to see these things.
And, right. Anything else?
Uh, well, the, the lighting plan we needed to see with all exterior lighting included, but that could have been a condition, but if they're coming back.
They're either, speaking from a legal perspective, they either have to be conditions or not. If you make something, if you want something, make it a condition. Don't, don't make it optional. Uh, if that's what you want to see, then make it a condition.
Well, no, my point is I think there's some things that can't be conditioned that we actually need to see.
Right. Correct, that's what, that's what we're-
I, I thought you meant-
That's what we're saying now.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. What do you have?
I misunderstood.
Well, those are my three things. The ground floor openings, the garage door.
I'm sorry, the what? I didn't hear.
Uh, the reconfiguration of the ground floor openings to be more consistent with the openings above. We want to see the garage door, and then we needed to see the lighting plan with all lighting sources included.
Don, I have a question. You raised an issue concerning the affordable housing and the location. Are you satisfied with?
He testified they're going to comply.
And, and we will work with the city to comply.
Okay, there's a, there's a couple of things that, uh, we had spoken about. Um, updating the, where the gas meter location is on the plan, because that was not where they are. Um, we talked about the possibility of, uh, expanding the rain garden. We did not determine whether that's something we wanted or not. And, I mean, it's something that I'm always interested in, to catch as much water as we possibly can.
Instead of the second entrance, too.
Instead of the second entrance on the same side?
Yep.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so we say yes to that, so we would like to see what that looks like?
That's one of those you want to see.
I want to see that, right? We want to see, uh, there was another thing, there was supposed to be an update to the swing door on the common terrace. Minor, but still. All right, so we need to see those. Um, we were going to make the fences, I don't know if this is something that, that we do, we said, we talked about the residential fences, and whether we're, that we're just going to create those fences as one fence.
They're going to work with the neighbors.
Or we're just going to work with the neighbors on that. So that's not, uh, I have to see that. Okay.
Uh- Pedestrian-friendly street furnishings?
Oh, we didn't talk, yeah, we didn't talk anything, but that was going to be on the list. Okay, add those. I, that's all that I have.
Well, and those are going to be kind of at the discretion of James's department.
Sorry?
Based on spacing and whatnot for the street improvements. Betches by grants.
Not typically. They don't go to me.
All right, so then you want to see them, the other, the architect talked about putting a balance on that facade. Garage light down for the garage lighting, so you might want to see that design.
Yes, we want to see that design as well to make sure that we don't see the lighting anywhere outside, all the way around.
I mean, it might be something we need to work on.
Yeah.
Are we talking about having them come back?
Oh, they're, they're, yeah, because we want to see these things. Okay. Okay? So hopefully you've, you've, you've worked on that. Um, I have some, uh, resolution compliance items that I'm just not quite sure if they have to be, have to?
They wouldn't go now, resident's compliance, post.
All right, uh, let me just make sure that this, and everything, you agree that everything is going to be 2,700, not 13, not 3,000?
Yes.
Right? Um, visual and auditory. You're going to do the visual and auditory, we don't really have to see what that is. Um, you're going to show us the rain garden, uh, lighting mounted high, no. Okay, I think that that's all the things that we need to see.
The other thing I had was James wanted at the corner of Langford and Second for that-
That ramps.
That, the ramp, yeah. I don't know how to describe that.
Yeah, uh, two pedestrian ramps about to cross the wall, instead of the one.
That one?
Yeah.
Good.
Anything else anybody can think of that we would like to, that we would like to see as opposed to making a resul, a condition? Okay?
Before you're done, do you want public comment tonight or the next week?
I would, I, actually, tonight probably would be a good idea.
Well, you're going to have to test one.
Well, we are going to have to test one, you're right.
Subject to cross-
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
I have one question about, um, construction phasing, like the staging and all that stuff.
That's a condition of final approval. I always put that in now as a standard condition. They have to meet with James to coordinate the, the phasing and street closure and all that other good stuff. In this case, there would be an additional, uh, meeting with, with the neighbors to discuss, uh-
The fencing.
The fencing.
And, and the trees.
But that's, that's a condition, that's not, you've got to see. So just for the, for record, for, for the public, that we are going to meet again, and that's when comment, if you have a three-minute comment that you'd like to throw out there, you're welcome to come back. And we have, we'll determine when that is right now, what day that is.
Will this result in any additional, or, like, you, you, are you going to need to prepare anything?
I can't hear you.
I'm talking to Donna, I'm sorry, I'm asking Donna. Yeah, they're going to revise plans. We're going to have to say whether it meets what they asked for.
So yes, so then it can't be like the next meeting. It has to be a little further out than that.
So, all right, today's August 4th. The next even remotely possible where everything would be due, August 11th, which is in one week, would be for the September 15th meeting?
Is that possible for you guys to get everything done in a week?
In a week?
So that we, you can come back September 11th?
If not, it's going to be October 6th.
So it's either September 11th or October 6th?
September 15th, sorry, September 15th.
I'm sorry.
September 15th or October 6th for the meetings?
Which would be, which would work better for you?
So we would prefer, uh, very much appreciate, uh, the September 15th meetings. The September 15th?
Yep.
All right, and that means the revised plans will need to be submitted by August 11th?
August 11th would be, are correct, Donna? Trying to figure out how much time she would, how much time she would need.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Right, hang on, yeah. Because Labor Day's the first, right? For August 11th due date.
Thank you, Donna.
August 11th due date for the September 15th meeting.
Okay, so that, so we will meet again on this application, September 15th, with no further notice.
And on behalf of my client, I consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have to vote on that?
You have to have a motion to carry it.
All right, can I, I'm, I-
Second.
Well, there you go.
And Daniel? Okay, um, James Benato?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Jen Souter? Daniel Shinameo? Bob Zuckerman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gounin?
Yes.
And Chairman Kerzak?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Thank you.